So we are going to get started here. Okay. Thanks, I know, right? Thanks all for coming out. So I'm going to call this meeting to order. So the first thing is review and approve the agenda. I don't think there were any needed changes, or I hadn't heard of any suggested changes to the agenda. Are there any comments or thoughts about changing the agenda? Okay, so without objection, we'll consider the agenda approved. So on to general business and appearances. So this is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on an item that is otherwise not on our agenda. And if you would say your name and where you live, and try to keep your comments to two minutes or less, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. There, am I, can you hear me? Okay, good. Elizabeth Parker, 8 Hillside Avenue here in Montpelier. And the first thing I wanted to say is bravo to Public Works for all their teamwork in getting the part of the multi-use bike path this side of the new bridge running along Shaw's paved. I know that it took them a lot of work to talk to the state because of all the issues that are going on to be able to put temporary pavement down so that people who have been going to the old Shaw's bus stop can actually, and people who want to use Shaw's can walk back and forth. So bravo to them. The second thing I wanted to say is that we had a resident who talked about the fact that she wasn't allowed to make a deviation to the farmer's market at Caledonia. So I got in touch with GMT about that, and they have resolved that issue so that it turns out that if someone wants to go to the farmer's market, they can take the city route midday between 9:20 a.m. and 2:30 p.m., ask for a deviation. So you can actually get on the bus here at the Transit Center, ask for a deviation to Caledonia, but you have to have called in advance to get a deviation back. And so I said, "Well, why can't the bus simply go to Caledonia as a matter of course on days when the farmer's market happens?" And I got the following response. Let me see which part of it is. Here we go. "There's concern that it would become a dedicated stop, which impacts their overall ADA service area." I don't exactly know what that means. And I guess that I don't really... And so then she talked about the fact, this is Jamie Smith from GMT, she talked about the fact that they'd already spoken with the farmer's market and made it clear that they couldn't do this regular deviation at that time. And so I have spent quite a bit of time on this, and I'm giving this to you all to ask about what this ADA service area means and why it's so limiting and why this accommodation can't be made because there are many people who are walkers who go to the farmer's market. And it's great that we have the multi-use bike path, but it's winter, and it's cold, and it's inconvenient. And I feel that in order to make people... Yep, okay, I'm stopping. You get the gist. Thanks.
Thank you. What's that? Do you have an answer? Oh, okay.
If you have a fixed route, and you're required to deviate a quarter of a mile to pick up anyone with disability issues. So your fixed route has an obligation of a quarter of a mile. So it becomes a fixed route, then they have an obligation, a quarter mile on all sides of that route, to pick up people. And so then it involves time. That's what it means. I'm just telling you what it means.
I understand that, but I just feel that that is insane.
Thank you. Hello?
Steve Whitaker, Montpelier. I've spoken too many times to no avail. I ask you to consider whether or not you're actually doing damage to faith and trust in government. We're letting our streets and our sidewalks decay and become unsafe. We're investing in what I call fluffy projects with somebody's vision of the future of Montpelier, which will likely gentrify and displace more Montpelierites. We've had two shootings of mentally disturbed people. Recently, I've uncovered another incident with the same officer that could have been served as a warning sign, where a woman's rear ribs were broken. We've decimated a homeless, vulnerable homeless person's camp and taken little to no responsibility for that. I asked at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, about formal city council action to insist that public records law be adhered to. And I was reassured, "No, we're not going to take council action. The mayor's going to speak with the city manager and get it handled." It hasn't been handled. It has not been handled. I've gotten a couple more trickle of records, and we've got months-old records requests. We've got an appeal to the head of the agency, which was sent to both of you, and it has not been responded to in the five-day turnaround period. You're becoming outlaws. That is not okay. You know, you can't fly in the face of the laws that you're sworn to uphold. The Transit Center is somewhat of a disaster. A person was hit there Friday night. The crosswalk location next to the bridge is unsafe. The garage fiasco. The homelessness task force was apparently loaded to its point of ineffective. Nothing of action has come out of that other than they'll ask for a few thousand dollars and continue for another year. If the records requests are being delayed specifically to counter or delay press attention, that hits a new level. That turns into corruption. Okay? I don't know the intent of these records requests going on for months now. There's about a dozen of them that have piled up and have not been responded to. So I'm sorry, I don't bring you better news. That ball's in your court.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So on to the consent agenda. Yes, Lauren?
I just had one question about the wood floor refinishing. It looked like in it, it said if we bought our own, we could save a couple thousand dollars, but we're asking for the full amount and not buying it. And I was just wondering what the rationale was there?
Could you want to come up to the microphone? Thank you.
I don't have a good answer for that question, and I apologize. I do know that we put this out for a couple of bids, and the refinishing was, we got two bids, one for fourteen thousand and one for seven thousand. I think there might be cost savings if we get like a way to refinish our floors ourselves in the future. But right now, we're just looking to replace the floors that exist.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, and maybe I was just misreading it, but I thought they said in the proposal, if you choose to just purchase, and they send a picture and everything of the specific floor polisher yourselves versus having us buy it, it would save two thousand plus dollars. So it seemed like, sure, couldn't we go on Amazon and order it? Go to Abashan's if they have it? But I might have misread, but that was the way I read it. I don't know if anyone else saw that.
I think it says if we are willing to seal, if we're willing to polyurethane ourselves, we would save...
Right. It would be our labor.
Right. So it's not just the purchase of supplies. It would be the labor of actually refinishing the floor.
We don't have anyone right now who has...
If that's the case, that's what I was wondering if I was misreading. I thought it said just the literal purchase would save...
It's in the, it's like the second-to-last sentence. It says, "Thank you for clarifying."
Well, you can authorize up to the full amount. We can take a look and see if we can save some money. They'd be happy to do that, too.
Okay. I mean, I guess, is there anyone in the city that can refinish a floor in the timeframe allocated?
That was not what I... No, I know. No, I know, but Bill said we could do that.
I said we could take a look and see what's feasible, but I can't guarantee it. But no reason to hold this up, as I'm saying, is if we can save it, we will. If we can't, we won't. But we can at least authorize the...
Okay. All right. Any discussion, or I should say, is there a motion regarding the consent agenda? Or would anyone like to pull anything? Is there a motion?
I move the consent agenda.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have some appointments to make. So for the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, I know there's at least, I think there's at least one person here for that. So we have two expiring seats and three vacant seats. So we have a total of five seats to fill. And there were applications from three folks. And one was still, it was contingent on an employment opportunity. So, yeah. If you're here for an appointment to the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, if you would come up and introduce yourself and tell us about your interest in this committee. I'm looking at you there.
I'm writing my response to Don.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Parker. I have been a Montpelier resident now for seven years. I was away for 20 years, and so I lived here back in the 90s as well. I'm very much interested in transportation and in finding solutions that work for everybody across the board for residents of her business. And I have attended a few meetings, and I'm very much interested in the transportation plan part of the city plan that is now going to be discussed. And I've had some background in community. I was Marshville Planning Commission and zoning administrator and raised half a million dollars to rehab the old schoolhouse common way back when. And I've been on numerous other boards since then. So I really appreciate the honor of being able to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I don't see the other candidates here. If I'm wrong, that's okay. All right. So is there a motion regarding the appointments to the Transportation Infrastructure Committee?
I move that we reappoint Stephen Felbell and Konstantinos Tavaros and appoint Hanif Nazarali and Elizabeth Parker.
Second. Further discussion?
I'm so proud of you with those names. Very envious.
I suppose with Konstantinos, if he wants to step down because of an employment issue, he'll let us know.
Right. I think it's all set.
Okay. Okay. So, all right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you to you and those who are not here for your time and dedication.
I would just like to thank Liz, especially because we're a little short on pedestrians in that committee. And so that's, you're a bicyclist, but you're also a pedestrian. I had a question about the dates. Were we not trying to put everyone in a certain time of year?
That was for planning and zoning. I don't know about this. I can check on these dates, though.
Well, just because these are December, and the next group is November. I thought we were trying to work on all of them to be more in sync.
I'm sure we can arrange for that next time around. These are legally binding, so we can adjust.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just want to bring it back up to the table.
Thank you. No, it's great. I hadn't noticed that. Okay. All right. So to the Complete Streets Committee. So for that committee, it looks like there are six openings, and I think there were five total applicants. And with this one, there's, one of the six available seats is one-year term. So it would make sense to me regardless that we might need to go into executive session to discuss that aspect of it, at the very least. So just want to flag that. But otherwise, if you're here for the appointment to the Complete Streets Group, we'd love to hear from you, have you introduce yourself. And I see some folks here. So, welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name's Dave Ory. I've lived in Montpelier. I'm fairly new, just been here a couple of years. I work as an urban planner professionally, not in Vermont, but other places. And I walk, I bike, I've got kids. Really like that it's so easy to walk and bike around Montpelier and want to do my part to maintain that. Thank you for your time and attention to that.
Cool. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Angel, and I'm on Main Street in Montpelier. I've lived here a little over a decade, and I've never served on the committee for the city, or on a committee in this capacity, I should say. I did attend a meeting last week and to see more about, find out more about the committee. And I have an interest in having a safe environment for us to travel on bikes, on the streets, sidewalks. And I personally want to be able to try to take advantage of that and get out and get more exercise and have more of that social aspect available to the community to intermingle. And I just feel that I have good ideas and be able to follow through, and it's time for me to step up and take some big responsibility. And I guess that's pretty much it, just to give back to the community. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Nancy Scholes. I am wrapping up my first term on the Complete Streets Committee and have applied to renew. I think we're in a great position now because we have had, we've heard from seven people who expressing interest in joining the committee. I don't know how many of them followed through with their applications, but I thought it was great that one post in Front Porch Forum generated that many responses. So it's an exciting time. I'm hoping to be reappointed and looking forward to having a complete, Complete Streets Committee for the first time, which would be nine members, and we just got a student from Montpelier High School. So nonvoting, but that would be 10 of us. Very exciting. And I think we are doing great work. I think we're all committed, whether we lean toward bicycling or walking, or both. I think everyone on the committee or applying for the committee is passionate about these things and about making Montpelier safer and friendlier to pedestrians, people in wheelchairs, people of all ages. And I look forward and I hope I get reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion? Or I assume there's no one else here, or at least no one else I recognize as being one of the other candidates? All right, so is there, yes, Jack?
Pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313a3, I move we enter executive session to discuss the appointment of a public officer.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, we will be right back. Out of executive session.
So move...
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And do we have a motion? Yeah.
Sure. I'd like to move that we appoint Phoenix Mitchell, Nancy Scholes, Mary Ann Angel, and David Ory for the two-year terms, and appoint Hanif as a rally to be one-year alternate.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. And thank you again for your dedication and your time and service to the city. Okay, so we have an update from the Public Arts Commission. And I know there's some folks here for that. So come on up to the table. Welcome.
Hello. We're two members of the eight-member commission that you appointed eight months ago. I'm Bob Hannum.
Rob Itzger.
And Kevin has been our guiding light throughout. Anyway, we just wanted to briefly just tell you what we've been doing in hopes that will excite you to continue our work for another year. First, I just want to applaud you for realizing that, you know, a thriving arts community is really a backbone to a successful city, to successful business, to growth. So with that, I just wanted to let you know, give you a brief outline. Kevin has given you material about detailing our work. But I just wanted to briefly go over and just say that, you know, for the past eight months, we've been meeting a lot because we wanted to get our feet on the ground and do something to show for having appointed us. So we have been following the Public Arts Master Plan that you commissioned and set us to do. And in that plan, there are basically three tasks that we've been given. And the first one is to identify and assess and create maintenance plans for the public art that we have. And that's been completed. The second task is to create more public art in our city. And we have actually gone through a lot of different options, and we've settled on our first project, which we intend to complete by July in cooperation with the arts festivals happening in July. And thirdly, we're tasked with raising money so that the dollars that you give us can go a long way. And we are in the process of doing that. We wanted to have a project under our belts so that we have something successful we can talk about to potential donors. And that's been our work. We've done a lot of work. And so I'm appealing to you all to let us continue for another year.
And also, just to add to what Bob had mentioned, we are completing a piece of public art that was done many years ago. The Vine sculpture that's in the alley between Zutano and the Blanchard Block, we've already ordered lights for that. That was originally intended to have lights, but nobody ever got around to doing it. So we've ordered lights, and we've just received them, and we intend to install it in the next couple of days. So that'll be completed.
You're going out tonight?
And as Bob was mentioning, we do intend to leverage other organizations in getting as much publicity and bang for our buck in these projects, one of which we are working with Paul Gamble's group for the festival this summer. And we're also coordinating with the 2020 Vision Initiative that's put together. It's a statewide initiative put together by state curators. And that's also one of the organizations we're working with to leverage our bang for our buck.
Questions?
Well, I really liked the report. It reminds us how much we have sitting throughout the town, and that they need attendance. So I really appreciate the report. I have a question about, you said you want to continue next year. We didn't appoint them just for one year, did we? Or were you really talking about the money for another year? That's what I thought. Okay.
Well, and to that point, I mean, we're going to be starting our budget conversation a little later this evening. So I'm hoping that you weren't looking for an answer just exactly now. But it is always good to hear, you know, about what that money would go towards and sort of where your vision is for moving forward in the future. I like to have specific things to point at to say, this is what that money's going for, rather than just some, you know, nebulous thing that's a little bit vague or not concrete. So it's very helpful. But we'll certainly have to consider it together as a part with the whole budget, for sure, as we get to it later on. Glenn?
I want to thank you both and the rest of the commission for the work you've done and for coming tonight. And I also want to say I'm really impressed with how much has been done and is being done, especially considering that we did fund it last year with half the request. So I want to remind council that we, the recommended level of funding for this sort of thing is more than we're giving them, and they're doing pretty great work as it is. I think we should try as hard as we can. I understand this year is a very tight year, but we should try as hard as we can to fund the public art commission as solidly as possible.
Yes?
Can I ask the committee a question? How are you deciding what to do for the public art?
Through our meetings that we're having on a monthly or more than monthly basis, we're discussing various projects. And we've narrowed it down to initially doing this lighting project in the alley. And we have a light projection project we're working on that will hopefully be unveiled this summer. But through our meetings, we're discussing various ways of... And the public is welcome to come to our meetings as well.
I mean, if you would say your name for the record.
I'm Heather Corey. And it would be neat to maybe put something in the Guardian or something, giving some options for the public to vote on, whether it was like a mural or...
Well, I guess we'll talk about it at the meetings. So you're welcome to come to meetings, and we can talk about how...
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Don?
So your report basically goes over the things that exist and costs to repair them. Now, we started out with $50,000 related to the contest with One Taylor Street. But maybe I missed it. Did you show us what's been spent on that? I mean, there's one place that says about $50,000, and 50% spent on your chart? But I don't really see like a budget with all these things listed.
Right. The One Taylor Street project was prior to the commission forming. So...
So you don't have any of that money, I see.
That wasn't included in any of our calculations. We don't know anything about that.
Glenn?
I think I can answer that, or at least the way I'm reading the material that we got, the 50% of $50,000 is, one of the goals was, get funded at $50,000 a year.
I know, we gave them half.
And we gave them half. So I think that's where that 50%...
Actually, we only gave them 20.
Right, but maybe, that's right. We only gave them 20.
It should be adjusted down.
But I was asking about the allocation that was related to that. And I'm glad you reminded me it was before. Thank you.
Any other, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, there was one outstanding issue as well that there was never a clarification as to where the money for maintenance was coming from. With our tight budget, it's hard for us to allocate the money from our allotment for maintenance. And we're hoping that the maintenance end of things was coming from additional funding. But anyway, that's an issue that we've been throwing around at the meetings and want you to consider. It's tough to make that work.
Well, thank you. Any further questions for these guys? Okay. Well, thank you again, and we'll be following up, of course.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay. Oh, yes. Yeah, absolutely. We're going to interrupt our regular schedule. So, yeah.
Casey? Are you, you mind coming up for a second?
Sure.
Thank you.
Does my care?
Yeah, you can sit. I wasn't necessarily asking you to speak, but you may. I wanted to apologize on behalf of the city for what happened to you.
Thanks.
The, you know, your things were taken inadvertently, and we are very... I know you made...
Thanks for bringing that one up. My God.
But we're sorry about that, and we...
Hey, listen, do you hang...
Well, we are sorry for what happened, and we did try to make it right.
Ow, Bill! You started it, and Andrew gave me a mic. What the hell were you saying?
You can have the mic anytime.
And Casey, I want to echo the same, and I'd love to chat with you about it later too, if that'd be helpful.
Because I did request it, and I totally do appreciate it.
Yeah.
I really, actually do.
Well, thank you.
I did not appreciate paying $381 for carrying a damn knife around I was only straight resin with, but I fell over a curb years ago, and they charged me, first they said they were going to charge me $300 for violently assaulting a sidewalk, then I had a meeting with somebody in your office, decided they were going to charge me more because I wasted their time. I paid $400 damn dollars for tripping over a sidewalk and exposing a knife I had for self-defense at a time when I had death threats, okay? So I don't really like the way you run your shop, Bill.
Well, I appreciate those comments. I'm not familiar with the event that you're talking about.
Of course you're not, because you don't read paperwork, you don't know what you're doing, and no one in your office does either.
Casey, if you'd like, I'd be happy to follow up with you also. All right, well, hope you have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
Okay. Yes.
I just have a question about the previous item.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I don't know, I don't remember enough about the actual language for the art council. Do we decide the maintenance, what money goes to maintenance and what goes to new works? Or do we give them a certain amount of money and they decide? So is there a way to look at that language?
I don't know that, I'm not sure that last year there was any real definition. We gave them a total sum of money.
Right.
And I don't know, I was trying to see in the report if there was an estimated amount. We, I know, you know, there's nothing, we've got in the current budget proposal specifically for arts maintenance, so we should probably talk with them about how much they think is appropriate and who and how, and I don't know what's needed, if it's specialists or something we can do, or, and again, you know, we have personnel shortages ourselves, so...
Right, I would just like to look at the language to see if we need to modify it, because I would like to see the maintenance under them, you know, but maybe I'm wrong, but I would like to at least look at that language and see what would need to change it, so.
So what you're, just to clarify, so what you're saying is that you want them to be able to decide, like, how much money ought to go to maintenance, rather than us deciding?
Well, that is one of their responsibilities, and they can decide of that, this is how much we're going to do in maintenance, this is how much we're going to do for new work.
Right.
I don't want to, I prefer not to see it separated, so that we're doing maintenance and they're doing new works. I think you have to do new works with maintenance in mind.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
Would you like an answer?
Oh, yeah, sure, that'd be great. If you wouldn't mind coming up to a mic, though, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, we have actually assessed all the current public art in our city. There's about 20 pieces, and that doesn't count private pieces or state-owned pieces. So, and of all those pieces, we just need about a couple of thousand a year to take very good care of them. Now, the other option is that we could approach the Public Works Department and see if they have the expert, well, doesn't really need expertise to do this, actually, but if they'd be willing to do it, that's another option.
Interesting.
Bob, right? I guess from when you were talking at the table, I thought you were asking us to come up with more money for maintenance or to make this decision. Do you understand what your language of your charge, does it include maintenance?
We're not sure either. We assume that to do it...
I can actually speak to this, too. So in the approved Public Art Master Plan, it was pretty, it was actually clearly laid out, is that one of the key pieces is to separate from a public art commission's role, is keeping maintenance separate, is a separate line item from an appropriation, so that that was actually one of the key pieces, is because as time goes on, any appropriation can get eaten up by all of the maintenance, and then there is no new work.
Okay, that's good to note, but you, so you have a separate line item for maintenance, a separate line item for new work, but they basically oversee both? It's within their charge?
Well, it is and it isn't. It is, it is in their charge that they make sure that it is done. It's not necessarily in their charge that they take it from their appropriation. Do you understand?
Yep.
So that's, I just wanted to say, though, in the Public Art Master Plan, that was separated, distinct separated.
Yeah, I'll go back and read it, okay. Thank you, thank you.
That's helpful, thank you. Yeah, Connor?
Quick question, I don't even know if it's considered art, but the Challenger Memorial over by National Life, I know this came up a few years ago, talking about moving it, maybe, is that actually owned by the city, or is it a National Life monument?
I believe it's owned by the city, but these folks may know better.
I don't know.
It didn't come up in these.
Yeah, no, that's a, I feel like I'm finding out new pieces as I go along.
They're hidden, they're hidden.
I will find out.
Yeah, I believe it, I believe it is the city's, and it was, National Life agreed to have it on the National Life property, and some years ago, they indicated that they wanted to use that space maybe for a sign or something. And at the time, actually, our current Public Works Director was working for our Public Director, and she was working with a committee to find a new location, and it kind of died down, and now it's come back up again. So I don't think there's anything imminent, but it is on, in some back-burder discussion to find a different location, but I do believe it is the city's.
I'll find out and clarify for you all.
Great, thanks, thank you. Any further questions on public art? Okay.
Just trying to leave.
You may leave. We won't talk anymore, I promise.
Okay, so we have an interim river hazard map amendment to discuss. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Mike Miller, I'm the Planning Director, and what I have is a quick discussion tonight. This will be a hearing for next week. What we have is the river hazard regulations, which were adopted at the same time as the zoning, but they're a separate set of regulations, separate set of rules. And we adopted those changes in 2018 in January, and since that time, we have been issuing permits. And this summer, we had a couple of items, a couple of projects that came up that seemed like reasonable projects that we're going to have difficulty being able to approve, and so we felt the appropriate thing to do would be to go back and to see whether some changes needed to be made to the rules to allow projects to move forward. One of those projects is on Coming Street, and if you looked at the map that was attached to the memo that I sent out, it's not perfectly clear, but you can see where there's Elm Street, and if you follow the green, you see it crosses over Coming Street. Well, that's the area that's in the river hazard area, in the river corridor, and according to the way the maps are supposed to be drawn, they are supposed to stop when they hit a road. Your river corridor is the area, rivers naturally meander across the landscape, and what the state has tried to do is to get municipalities to adopt these river corridors, to give rivers room to move. But one of the rules they have is if that river moves and hits a road, we're not going to go and discontinue the road, we're going to protect the road and let it work within the bounds of these roads. And if you look throughout the rest of our corridor, that's the way it's been mapped. For whatever reason, it got missed on Coming Street, and it turns out, we didn't notice it because it was such a minute thing on a large map that we never really noticed it until somebody came in with a project, and they can't do the addition on their house because it would expand into the river corridor. So that's the reason for that change. It really is very straightforward. It shouldn't have been in the district at all, so we're going to recommend taking it out. The second set of changes that are in here are also discussing the river corridor, that river channel that moves, and what we had was, we did have rules about accessory structures, but it turns out it really didn't work in all situations, and what was a very simple project turned out to be something that we had a difficult time approving. It was just a shed cover for somebody's sand pile. He works doing sanding and plowing, and he needs a place to store his sand for the winter. It's a low-value structure, has low-value content. It is more than 50 feet from the river, but it is in the river corridor. And so we felt we could amend those rules, clarify them a little bit, and to make sure that, you know, it wasn't something that could be abused in another situation, but would allow for some reasonable accommodations for these types of projects, low-value projects with low-value contents. We should be able to approve such a structure. So that's what you have before you, is because it takes a long time to adopt permanent, we thought we would start with these interim changes, and if they work, we would be back at some point to do a full adoption process to adopt them.
Jack, and then Ashley, and Donna.
So you'll develop some kind of form for the acknowledgement of the inherent risk to property as part of the process?
Yes, we felt that that made a lot of sense, that we should have that included. As you can see, it was one of the additions, and we felt if we were going to start to allow these things, we had to have people acknowledge that this is a risky area.
Thanks.
Did I hear correctly, you said you wanted to look at what was standing in the way of projects, did I, is that...
It turned out there were two specific projects that came in. We've had a number of projects that have come in that could meet these rules and/or were adjusted so they didn't have to be in the river corridor, but these were two specific projects. One was to put potentially an accessory apartment onto an addition in their house, and that that project was not going to be allowed because it was in the river corridor, even though it was on the other side of the street. And then this other project came up in a different part of the river corridor.
I, I, thank you for the explanation. I just, I don't like to assume things. I think what I am struggling with is changing things in response to particularized requests, and I guess what makes me uneasy is, you know, I've driven a lot lately, and there was some pretty significant flooding north of here. I know the river rose here quite a bit, but we did not flood, but parts of Colchester, Essex, I mean, we're talking like lots and lots and lots of water, like covering entire fields, and I, I am hesitant, I mean, I know 50 feet is, it's 50 feet, which in the grand scheme of things is not that much, but on the flip side, I guess if we want to preserve our waterways and we are invested in sort of keeping space open because natural events happen, I'm, what I'm struggling with is, is we, I think we talked a lot about the 50-foot restriction, if I am correct, when we went through this the first time around, and so I'm struggling with changing it now and then sort of doing it as a piecemeal process, because I could see changes, you know, to certain parcels where, you know, that might not be something that we ever intended to allow, but, and I know, I think I know the answer, I know no one likes the variance process. Is this something where we could simply add, you know, a variance option, so, you know, if your project meets these criteria, you can apply for a variance as opposed to a blanket change?
So to kind of answer the first part of your question, when we get applications where something gets, something doesn't meet the rules and gets disapproved, we have a very careful and deliberate discussion of, you know, is this the intent of what we wanted when we adopted these rules? In some cases, the answer is yes, it absolutely is not a project we wanted to have happen, this is, you know, in other cases, we look at them and say, you know, this isn't what we intended, is it worth making that change for just this one project? In this case, we really looked, would we want to allow this to happen in other places? Which is why you saw a number of different additional requirements that were added in. We didn't strike any requirements or remove any requirements, we actually added additional requirements to some of the lesser ones before allowing this new one. So we already allowed things less than 480 square feet. This one happened to be larger than 480 square feet because it had to fit the salt pile, and we were, and we felt if there were certain conditions, which we outlined, then that could be okay. A little bit to get to your second question, what we did add was, number four is actually a waiver, which is what you would think of as a variance. So variances are very difficult under state law to issue, so we did allow for a waiver provision that if somebody wanted to have more flexibility, they could go to the Development Review Board, and they could request some flexibility, provided they met these restrictions that we outlined.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
My read, though, of subsection four is they can request a variance in relation to the new 711 D2B and 711 D3B, so that would be an additional variance from the change, right, from the proposed change that's before us right now. So they could deviate further, and so I guess I understand what you're saying in terms of the variances being restrictive under state law, and I know we talked about sort of the goal of streamlining as opposed to making people request a variance. I, I'm uncomfortable with, with having the new proposal, which would sort of allow for this other type of development, but then also going even further and opening that up once again and saying, well, you know, we also, we're going to change this, but then you can also apply for more than what's here. And I understand that there are criteria, but I have learned that sometimes less is more, and I just, I, this is, this is not something that I support for a myriad of reasons, but that part in particular, so there's the expansion, and then there's that sort of like extra, it's like an expansion plus, and that makes me a little uneasy, given, you know, certainly, the city wants people to be able to use their property as it is, but I think we, as the governing body here, have an obligation to ensure public safety and to, you know, to make sure that structures, when they are built, are able to be insured, because if there is damage, people are going to need to replace that or sort of deal with the fallout of an event. But I also, again, I really don't, I really struggle with changing things because something comes up. I would, I would much prefer a more thoughtful approach, you know, why did we do this in the first place like this, versus a reactionary, you know, well, they want these projects, and if we do this, then those can happen.
Yeah, okay. And we usually don't look for hypotheticals, so we usually don't discover problems until somebody comes up with an application.
Donna?
I took an opposite approach. I was pleased to see, these are new rules, and we don't know how they're going to unpack until we have a project. So I like seeing this because you kept in all three stances, the structure is not within 50 feet of the stream or riverbank, and likewise, is no closer than the existing principal structure. So to me, you kept protections in that really limits it, but by the same token, after you've gone through your thoughtful process, you realize, oh, we missed this. I feel we're going to be doing this with our zoning until we apply it for a while, so I'm in favor of it, so...
Again, the reason, if I could just follow up a little bit, on the reason why we put the exception in for the, for just B, which is new structures cannot be closer than the existing principal structure, is we have a couple of properties on Elm Street where all of the single-family homes are outside of the river corridor, but all of their backyards are in the river corridor. So we, as we were talking about, looking at this and thinking about what we might see in the future, we started thinking, what if somebody wanted to put a garden shed in their backyard? We can't do it as we currently have it written because it would be closer to the river than the principal building. So we just looked at a number of them and said, you know, we can see this one coming, and so let's put the waiver in, because then we can go through and say, we're, you know, we can limit the size of the structures, the number of the structures, we can say, it's got to be the minimum, so you can't go, you can have that... the principal building. So we just looked at a number of them and said, you know, we can see this one coming, and so let's put the waiver in because then we can go through and say, we're, you know, we can limit the size of the structures, the number of the structures, we can say, it's got to be the minimum. So you can't go, you can have that shed, but you might not have it next to the, or, you know, if you have 100 feet, we might say, well, you can't have that shed at the 50-foot mark, we're going to want it to 75-foot mark. We've got a way of having some right to say where that small shed, or swimming pool, or something else that might go in the backyard. Because that's what somebody could potentially have on Elm Street, is they want to put a swimming pool in their backyard, and we'd have to say no. And we felt, before somebody comes in and we've got to amend the rules again, we thought this was a great opportunity for us to rethink about our rules. And then because we had had accessory apartments discussed, we wanted to make sure it's clear that whatever structure goes in there shouldn't be habitable. And that was why we'd put the extra rules that said, no more, it can be an accessory structure, but it couldn't be an accessory apartment in that area.
Other thoughts? If you have more.
I may make a motion, no more discussion.
Well, I have some thoughts, but, Lauren, go ahead.
Well, go ahead first. I have something to say, too. Go ahead.
One question to start, so Ashley had raised the question of insurance. Would these be insurable at this point, if you're building? What are the restrictions?
It's not our, we don't, we don't get into the insurance and whether something is insurable or not. There, so there are, within a river hazard area, a number of different lines that are in there, and they tend to overlap, they're not exclusive. You're going to have the flood hazard area, which is identified based on as water comes up to a certain point, what area is covered. That could be wider or narrower, depending on what the terrain is like. So you'd have the river corridor, and within that, you've got the floodway. So you've got the area where the water moves the fastest. So that's usually right up next to the river channel. So within the flood hazard rules, those are your FEMA flood hazard rules, that's one district in your river hazard area. The river corridor is a second one. That's the one that's looking at as the river moves. So these, both of these projects that we were talking about were not in the flood hazard area. They were only in the river corridor, which meant they're above the flood stage. They will not flood in a flood, in a 100-year flood. If it exceeds 100-year flood, I have no.
Hashtag challenge accepted.
Yes. They won't flood in those 100-year event, but they would both be theoretically subject to a river moving, undermining the bank, and dropping them in the river. That's, so that's the difference between those two. So the insurance, there is insurance tying to the flood hazard piece. Because communities and individuals are only eligible for insurance if we adopt and enforce our FEMA, the flood hazard rules consistent with the federal guidelines, which we do.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation. Yeah, I mean, just thinking about, so there's the 100-year floods. We know in this era of climate change, we're going to see more extreme flooding more often. So I really don't like us encouraging development in flood-prone areas. I think, I mean, I, lots of work I'm doing in other capacities are looking at, how do we take structures out of flood river corridors and so on? So to say that, you know, we're moving in the opposite direction really concerns me. I understand the intent here and how frustrating it must be if you live in a home that is restricted in this way, but it's areas that if we were developing a new city now, you would probably look at certain, have some different criteria perhaps. So I just do have some concerns about, you know, there might be ways of tightening this up. I mean, even something like a garden shed, what are you storing in there? Is it stuff that we want washing into our river? There might be tightening up of, you know, even further of what exactly are we permitting? But I err towards more not wanting to open up new development in these areas personally.
So I know, Jack, you had something to say, too, but I'm going to jump on that comment as well, because that was my thought as well. I was similarly worried about encouraging construction near the river, similarly. To that end, particularly with anything related to changes in the river hazard codes, you know, the ordinance documents, that sort of thing, I would love to be getting input on that from the Conservation Commission. I would love for them to just have an opportunity to do a once-over and see if they have any concerns about the language. I mean, that's, that's just me, but, and then similarly, I was worried also about the contents of the shed. So, not the shed, but whatever it was, right? So the fact that the language currently says, used for storage of low-value contents, is, on the one hand, I mean, I understand why that would matter, because if it's at a risk to be destroyed, then, you know, what's the loss there? But I, I'm also interested in, you know, what type of hazardous chemicals are we keeping in the flood-prone area? So I, before, I would love to see that language be modified to reflect that somehow, if that's a reasonable request. And then, one further thing is just that in 2B and 3B, I think that's the wrong principal.
Did I grab the wrong?
I think it should be the other principal.
Should be the PAL.
In 2B and in 3B.
Meaning the principal should be the PAL, not the PL.
Yeah, sorry, I know, it's super.
Principal.
Particular.
Principal structure would be PLE.
I think that's right.
Is it?
It's the principal structure, as opposed to your PAL.
It's a principal person.
Right, well, isn't, am I wrong? Oh, I'm wrong. I just looked at the definitions. Duh. Okay.
I probably have that mistake a lot of places.
I think I'm with you, Mayor.
You agree with me?
We work for principle.
Well, right, I do, but if, but, okay, now I'm going to look it up again.
The principal idea, the main idea is LE.
Yes, correct.
But if you look up PAL, the first definition is first in order of importance.
A principale PAL structure, that is true.
Yeah.
I learned something.
Look up the other one and see if it doesn't say the same thing.
Yep, I know.
Oh, we learn something all the time.
Tom's shaking. Okay, well, in any case, at least it's a.
So you talked as if we can control what people store in their sheds? Like your garage? I mean, there's certain rules, right? The state says about flammable or whatever, but can we control?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know.
Okay.
And I'm willing to concede that maybe we can't.
Yeah, just so we're clear, the, when I mentioned that there were these two separate or three separate things that kind of overlap and can shift back and forth, the rules are cumulative. So if it's in the river corridor and the flood hazard area, it would have to meet those flood hazard area rules as well, which would prohibit the storage of those types of materials.
Okay.
And if it's outside, as in the case that we were looking at here, it's a structure that is above the flood stage and 50 feet. So our thought is that would enter the river if the river moved 50 feet, which I think in most cases in this city, that would be a tremendous event to move a river 50 feet.
Ashley. Oh, actually, before, Jack, did you have something further?
I do. She's directly responding to what you've got going on.
Is this in response, is this on the same topic?
It is. I think the only other thing that I would raise is, you know, with a 450-square-foot accessory structure, I mean, that could do damage to abutting property owners as well. And again, I'm, I try not to generally be like the worst-case scenarioer, but that, I mean, that is a, that's a pretty significant addition to a parcel. And then if you have neighbors that are abutting, and, you know, there's a major weather event, it just, it seems like kind of the same thing, that there might be unintended damages to abutting or attendant properties that, you know, that those landowners are going to have to address, you know, and I just, I'm not sure that that's what we were looking to do.
Jack?
In general, I think that what we're doing here is very similar to what we did earlier this year with the zoning ordinance, where we, the city found a series of things that were unanticipated, that didn't allow for desirable uses, and needed to make changes in order to enable those desirable uses to occur. And we had this, you know, fixing, the zoning fixes, as we kept calling them, and the steep slopes issue. And so I think this is a good, good idea to be doing. Whether it's the exact right language, I don't know, but I would, I'm certainly going to support going forward and scheduling this for a public hearing. The question that occurred to me, as we've been talking about this, and you mentioned a garden shed, is that there are garden, there are small buildings below a certain size that people don't even need to get a permit for. So how would someone know whether they're, if, whether they're allowed to do it or not?
The, one of the big reasons that we decided to move the river hazard regulations outside of the zoning was because of the exceptions that exist to zoning, in many cases don't apply to river hazards. So in most zoning bylaws, if you look at, they say, except in the flood hazard area, a garden shed less than 100 square feet doesn't need a permit. Well, in the flood hazard area, it does. So it actually becomes confusing to some people who are doing things. When we separated it out, it becomes a lot clearer because everything, all development in the flood hazard area needs a permit. So even the smaller, even the smaller projects.
So people are expected to know that, or if they, if they call the city and say, hey, I'm doing this little thing, do I need a permit for it? You'll tell them, well, you don't need a zoning permit, but.
But you do need the river hazard permit because we have to make sure that the structure is going to be anchored. If it were, say, a small shed, we would say, that's great, make sure it's anchored, and you'll have to bring in a permit, and we will be looking at that aspect of it to make sure it doesn't float away. So those are usually the pieces that we look at. And we always encourage, and anyone who listens, if you have a project idea, always just email my office. That's what we always encourage people to do, because then we have a written record that goes and says, hey, I wanted to put in a shed, and we can look and say, you're not in the flood hazard area, or where you're looking to put it is not in the flood hazard area, so you can just go ahead and do it. But it's always good to contact us first, because we can confirm you don't need permits, and then you have something in writing.
Thanks.
What, your desire team, is there a motion regarding setting the first hearing for next time? Would you like to send it to Conservation Commission, or not do it at all? Also, I stand by my thing about principle.
Yes, yes, I actually have even a better definition. I have a better definition, that the one with the pile, PAL is a noun and an adjective, but the PLE is only a noun and refers to high moral ground. So your principle is your pile, but friend, it's my southern accent, sorry. If you have a PAL, it can also mean a description of something, to be main, more important. So you're right.
Thank you. And Tom?
Tom Brown from Montpelier, apologize for my outburst, the matter is correct.
That's the PLE kind.
Stand by your principles.
Or try to be flexible, my.
Well, regardless, what is.
I can search for that typo to see where else it exists.
Don, go ahead.
Well, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to have a first hearing, and meanwhile, we can talk to the Conservation Commission.
There only needs to be one, but you can always have more, just so you know. This isn't one that needs to be adopted through the two readings process. Because it's an interim change, it can, it can be adopted with one hearing, but it's up to you how many you want to have.
But if it's an interim change, doesn't that mean that it has to be formally adopted later?
It's effective for two years, and then would have to be, sometime within that two-year period, would have to be formally adopted.
And you're thinking within that two-period, we would do a more inclusive adoption?
Yeah.
Of everything, not just this?
Yes. Well, these are the only changes. If we find any other changes at that time, we probably would look at that. But knowing, in this case, we felt it's a little more timely to do them on an interim basis, because there were existing projects, one of which was looking at the ADU program that we have going on, and they can't advance their project until they can get their permits. And so if we wanted to go through a four-month process of revising the map, that would mean they wouldn't be able to advance the ADU project. So that's why we voted to go with an interim rather than the full adoption process.
So we'll see if it passes. I'll make a motion that we set our first public hearing at our next meeting, which is December 18th, to approve the proposed interim river hazard area amendments.
Second.
Is Conservation Commission going to meet before then?
I think, ironically, I think they are meeting at the exact same time. They're meeting over in the manager's conference room, because I had to meet with them, and I was like, well, I guess I'm already going to be here, except for, but for this, I will be able to go over and meet.
Maybe we can ask them to, maybe we just put it later on the agenda and.
Put it first on theirs.
Exactly. Just pop over and say how that went.
Yeah, it's actually already warned, because it had to be a warned hearing, it's actually already warned for 6:45, so we already know when it will be next week.
Oh, okay.
Unless you've decided not to do it.
Yeah. Okay, fair enough. That works for me, if we can hopefully get them to take it up early. So any further discussion? Yeah.
So just on this point of like what you could store, so it sounds like in flood hazard areas, there are restrictions on what you're allowed to store. I mean, is that something that you think, from your perspective, could be appropriate or could be applicable here? Or do you see challenges with just kind of dropping similar language into this?
We could certainly review it. Our concern, we knew, knowing this was built 50 feet from a bank, we figured it's going to take a bit of time for that to probably meander its way over to whatever structure it is. But we certainly could look at what is in the existing limitations for the flood hazard area and replicate that in this case. I would have to do a little bit to look up where it is. I can't off the top of my head grab the numbers.
One possibility is that maybe we just add a reference in the section two wherever has the list spelled out, or those regulations spelled out? Is that, oh, okay. How do you feel about that, of those who made that motion?
We can make modifications at the first hearing.
That's fair. That's a good point. It's true, it's not really a part of this motion necessarily, so, okay, cool. Any further conversation? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Okay, and on to the winter parking ban ordinance amendment for Sibley and Prospect Street. So this is the first public hearing, so I am going to officially open the public hearing. And, yeah, so are there any comments from councilors or the public?
I know there's a couple of people from the public that want to comment, but I just say, in general, this was done because we had discovered there were a couple of areas where it was difficulty for vehicles to get through when snowbanks existed and under storm conditions, and for emergency vehicles. So we raised this once before. Council asked us to notify nearby residents, which was done, and that's why we're here.
Great. Comments?
I'm Heather Corey, and I live on Sibley Ave. And I was wondering, why is it more difficult to move the snow on that part of Sibley Ave than other streets? Is this for the whole winter, a parking ban for the whole winter for Sibley and Prospect? And if it has been difficult to move the snow on particular streets, why not make it a two-day parking ban for those locations? I lived there last winter, and it seemed like we needed a parking ban. I lived there last winter, and it seemed like we needed a parking ban about, once a week was how much I had to move my car. Currently, I myself am able to park in a friend's driveway, but I don't really foresee that happening all winter long, and I'm not really sure of like, the safe locations where I can park my vehicle at night and walk back every single evening. I rent, I don't have a driveway to park in. There is one that the landlords use, but they are able to get up with, you know, big, strong trucks and stuff, and my vehicle can't do that. I just, I think it would be simple enough, you know, if, I understand it's a lot to plow in the winter, I think it'd be simple enough for the city to add yet one more alert to our streets to say, the parking ban is in effect for, or no longer in effect, except for Sibley Avenue, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Valerie Lewis. I live at 1 Saban Street. So I'm on the corner of Saban and Sibley. I grew up on Lower Sibley Avenue, so I grew up on the area that we're talking about. And I'm here to ask you to amend the parking, winter parking ban ordinance for Lower Sibley only. I don't think it's a problem at the top of the hill, it gets much wider up there. But I grew up on the street, and I'm down in that area every day, because my mother still lives in that house. And it gets very, very congested in the winter. It's bad enough any time of the year, if you've driven up there and tried to go around the corner when someone's coming down the street, you know how tight it gets. In the winter, the snow gets pushed out, and particularly in front of my mother's house, there was a repair, a temporary repair made to the sidewalk several years ago. And it was intended only to be temporary, because it was crumbling pretty badly. They weren't able to do a regular curb there, and so they had to slope it. And so anyone parking in front of there parks a little farther out, because the curb is sloped. So that's pretty close to the corner. And it, the snow just, when it gets pushed out, you've got people coming down the hill, many of whom really don't like to stop at the base of College Street. And then you've got people trying to come up around the corner, and it just gets really dangerous. There are, there are times when it's almost terrifying to try to get out of my mother's driveway at 8 and 10. I think that anybody who doesn't have a place to park could park farther up the street, because I don't think there, there is a problem from College Street up to Saban. It's just that small section that just is really hazardous. And I just live in fear that somebody's going to get hit, and there's going to be a real, you know, a real bad accident there, so. And we have made an offer for our neighbor, when our driveway is available, to park in our driveway. Because we, we try to park in the driveway and leave space out on the street for, that particular house doesn't have a lot of parking, everybody else does. But we, we have made that offer, but I think that you would be able to park up the street, and it's pretty safe, because I walk the street every night, back and forth between my house and Sibley. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Does she have your number? Does she have your number?
She has my cell number.
Very nice of you.
Good evening, my name's Stephen Cohen. I'm a resident at 46 Prospect Street. My wife and I own 46 and 48, we're a duplex. We house two families, including ours, we're a four-car household. We all commute, who knows, a challenge here in Vermont, getting around transportation, talked about earlier this evening. It would be a pretty massive inconvenience for us to, we have two off-street parking spots, so we split those between our units. Be a pretty massive inconvenience for us, as well as the other three to four cars that are typically on the street every night, that don't have driveway parking. The closest place to Prospect to legally park is down here at City Hall, in the same places that are reserved for off-street parking during the parking ban. I know a lot of us leave really early and come home really late, based on our work, commuting and working service industry jobs and things like that. So it's kind of a schlep, especially in the winter, there's ice. I don't know if anybody's been up Prospect Street, walking up that hill, but it's, can be fairly treacherous, especially when there's no lights and it's black ice. The other piece that I've heard come up about this amendment is that it's in regard to creating more passageway for emergency vehicles, which I think is interesting, because the section of street that the non-ban applies to, even when there are cars parked there, isn't even close to the most narrow point on the street. There are points on the street that are two to four feet more narrow than that section with cars. So if emergency vehicles coming up is a concern, the cars parked in that area of the road are the least of the concern. Yeah, it's two feet on, I took measurements this morning before I came up here, it's two feet on the, at the intersection with Cherry, and then coming up the other side off of Hill Street, I don't know really if an emergency vehicle could make that turn. It's, it's steeper than a 90-degree turn, and on a pretty steep hill, so that would be pretty challenging. So, yeah, I asked the, I like your idea about, you know, potentially keeping it with, you know, if you call for a ban, if you need more time to remove snow in those areas that are a little bit challenging, extend the ban. Like, we're all pretty reasonable about moving our cars off the street when there is a ban, so, you know, we're flexible, but it'd be pretty inconvenient to have to park at City Hall for three and a half months out of the year, every night. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Quaranta. I live on Berlin Street, but my family owns the 8 and 10 Sibley, so I have 61 years of experience on that street. I've also worked for 39 years in municipal government between Berry and Montpelier, so, while some of the suggestions of like, additional parking ban times sound great, but financially, somebody's got to go out, put all these, you know, tags, notify people, you know, it's a lot of labor for that. Whereas right now, like Sibley as an example, it was so frustrating that the snowbanks got so big, but yet, if there was a ban on that part, okay, so like, weather like this, DPW is not outstanding solving today, but they could take a crew out tonight without a lot of, you know, they're, you know, possibly not overtime, maybe shift differential, but get out there and clear that, and keep it, you know, just a lot safer. So the corner of Sibley, it gets wide, you can't see around it. You know, Heather, wonderful person, I understand that part, but from Sibley, the bottom of College to the corner of Sibley, you're talking like, three and a quarter houses, and we own one of them. We have folks from the legislature that stay there, they all go up the driveway, and it's been pretty scary sometimes, them even trying to get in. One of the gentlemen is handicapped, and there is just no way he could even park on the street if he had to, so. I'm just asking, please, after, you know, many years of experience with that street, to please consider, and again, our household would be one that would be impacted, but for the safety. Every night I'm there, and I'm fearful, push the mirrors in, I'm even afraid getting out. I'm there like, you know, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, and I think you're in that area, who's the representative, what do you call them here, aldermen, or whatever?
I do, but I'm not, but I don't live there, but I go by there all the time, so yeah.
So, does anyone travel that?
Yes.
Okay, so anyway, I won't keep you and keep rambling, I know the two-minute kind of rule, you know, I've been on the other side of the table, so, thank you, and anytime, Heather, you still can park.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, comments from council? Or, did you have something you wanted to follow up? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
There's still many, many days in the winter where we don't have treacherous conditions, and we already park pretty far from that corner of Berry and Sibley. I don't really see the difference between the conditions on Sibley Ave in the winter and, for example, Berry Street. I know you don't have control over drivers' behaviors, but people are pretty generous, driving away from the side of the road and taking up more space than not really allowing another car to get by. I often see people driving about four feet from the cars parked on the side, and people can drive slower in the winter as well. And I know this would be a different thing to address that's separate from the parking ban, perhaps the challenges of Sibley Ave should be more about changing that part of the street to a one-way rather than a two-way.
Thank you. Okay, Ashley?
So I used to live right down the street from here at 178 Berry, and I take Sibley every day to get home. And I am a renter, and I've lived in places with no parking, and I, I understand why, because I too have had many closer call than I feel comfortable with at that intersection. But I, I am, the sort of question that's been like, playing over and over in my mind is like, what, what is the, the crux of the issue? And, I mean, that intersection has existed that way for, I mean, I've lived here for five years, six years now, and it's been like that ever since I can remember, it was like that when I used to come up here when I was a kid. And so, you know, we've always had snow, we've always had cold miserable weather, and, you know, but when you rent and you have to walk, I mean, I used to live in Boston, and I would have to park like, seven, eight, nine blocks from home, and have to walk home alone, which I don't feel safe or comfortable doing. And I used to live on that section of Berry Street, and I was uncomfortable walking from downtown Montpelier home. And I understand that that is a dangerous corner, but I feel like, to me, the question more is, is this an issue year-round, in which case, I think we would have one approach to it. But it seems like this is a winter-specific thing, and so we know that the number of cars that are presumably parking there aren't changing between the seasons. So the only, the only difference really seems to be the snow, and so I wonder if the, you know, sort of coming at this from addressing the parking situation, isn't actually addressing the root of the problem? Because if the snow is still coming out too far, and you have to pull, I mean, there have been times where you have to pull pretty much out onto Berry Street to be able to see who's coming. I'm certainly not comfortable, you know, telling people who rent, who, I mean, when I rented a place that didn't have an off-street parking place, I made sure that there was sufficient on-street parking, and that was, you know, a material piece of moving to a place, because if I don't have a place to park, that's not a place that I can live, because I have to commute for work. And so I, I am not going to vote in favor of this. I just, to me, there's got to be a different approach to take that doesn't, you know, limit the parking, given how hard it is to be a tenant in this community, in terms of paying your rent and being able to keep ahead, or even keep up, frankly. But, and I understand the safety concerns, but I really feel like there's something that we could do with DPW to address that particular spot. And I don't know if there's something separate that we could do for winter, to like, make sure that people are paying attention. But I, I know what that walk is like, and even where I live now, sometimes I can't get up the hill in the winter, so I have to park down here, and then I have to walk up the hill to get home. And it's, it's, I just, I don't, I'm not sure that, that changing this actually changes the issue.
I can answer part of your question, Ashley. One of the reasons it, you know, was not a problem for many years was because the city had a complete parking ban. This temper, this, you know, occasional parking ban is relatively new within the city. So these problems have occurred primarily since this partial here, ban has gone on. You know, i- if there's some other way to do it, that's fine. I have empathy for folks who are renting. I have to park sometimes if someone else is in our driveway, and I'm going to my mother's house, I have to park up above College Street and walk down, because there are renters who prefer to park in front of their building. A lot of times, we can't park in front of my mother's building. So we're talking about parking three houses up the street, on a street that's basically pretty safe. So I don't think that's too far, and there's a lot of parking at the top of that street. So in the interest of safety, and it's only really impacting one house, everyone else has off-street parking. So if people could park three houses up, unless we can come up with another way to deal with it.
Thank you. Jack?
As I read the proposed ordinance, the, the parking ban would only apply to between Berry Street and College Street, and so up where you are, past College Street, you still would have the ability to park during parking ban evenings.
Not during parking ban evenings, during non-parking ban.
During non-parking, right.
That whole area would be available for parking, and all those houses have other parking, so the street is available up there for parking.
Okay. And Donna?
Is it also, I mean, for me, one of the things besides the snow is just icy, and so you sometimes take up more space to get up the hill. So it is that condition of how much more ice, hot, cold, hot, cold, that we have our winters recently, so I just want to put that in.
Before, before you go, I want to see if there's anyone else who hasn't, just conscious of like, how many times people are speaking, is there anyone else who's spoken, who would like to speak again? Okay, and any councilors who haven't spoken? Yes, go ahead.
But, go ahead.
No, no, no.
So bringing it back to Prospect Street, then, I live on Prospect Street. I spoke with Stephanie Cohen earlier, I don't know if Stephen's still here. Yeah, so I, I got some of the same points, and a couple of expansions on Stephen's points. I also have been hearing from other neighbors on Prospect and nearby, a couple of possible shifts in the amendment. If it's possible to keep the, the lower part of Prospect Street open, between Northfield Street and Colle, I'm sorry, and School Avenue, where it's nice and wide, kind of put between numbers one and two, that feels like it might help those Prospect Street people who do need on-street parking. There's also a kind of bulb out underneath number 67, that in past years has been used for, for snow storage, which is a useful use, but if it could be plowed, we could squeeze a couple of cars in there. I think that, I don't know if, if Stephen has a thought on that, but I feel like if, if those two areas were also exempted from the ban, that would go a long way to making it palatable for, for some folks. I also have heard from neighbors who really do feel like it urgently needs better clearing that the, the complete ban would provide. It does get frighteningly narrow at some points, and it's already narrow even without snow, at a couple of choke points, as Stephen mentioned. So if we can follow up on that before the second public hearing, at least, on those open, potential open spots, that'd be great.
Could you repeat your numbers again?
Yeah, so there's a wide section between, I think it's between numbers one and two Prospect Street, it's like, right down at the bottom.
This is 35 to 51, is it not?
Right. That is the, the space on one side of Prospect Street, that is exempted between 35 and 51.
And you're suggesting maybe also exempting...
Also exempt between one and two.
One and two, okay.
And this one little bulb out around number 67.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you were exempting it?
Yeah.
Or wanting to exclude it, so just, okay.
And I have a question too. The, as Ashley brought up, you know, that what's the crux of the issue here? And for me, it's about the emergency vehicle passage, and... passage. And so, I will be very interested to hear if with these potential changes, you know, if you exempt between one and two, uh, does that jeopardize emergency vehicles getting through that space? Yeah, if you, if you, if you have thoughts on that. And then, and then we'll get to your, your comment. Thank you.
I think leaving that bottom section open between Northfield and School Ave would not, that's not an issue for emergency vehicles. We have plenty of room there. It's from there beyond and it gets very tight. Um, there would, I got at least six or eight complaints last year from residents who were concerned and we would check and we could not get through with it. Keeping in mind that the only access to Prospect Street is on the one end, we can't access it from the other end because we can't make the turn off from Hill Street back. We had done that before. It's not a good option, but you pull uphill Street and then back down Prospect. Not a great option. But there have been, there was a situation where that was our only way in because the street with snowbanks get so narrow. And um, I think with Valerie, it made the point, when we had a complete parking ban, it's only become a problem since the complete parking ban. So, that, that section of Prospect Street needs a complete parking ban.
Um, thank you. And yeah, since this is your second time, yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I think we've talked about Glenn's point about, you know, some conciliatory parking either at the bottom of the hill or in the bumpout in front of, what number did you say that was?
I said 67.
Yeah, in front of 67, where they've usually banked snow. I think that that's a, it's a reasonable concession. I'd like to see it go the other way. Um, but uh, I'd certainly prefer that over a full ban and people not having access to vehicles on that street at all.
Sorry, can you just say that one more time? So?
Yeah.
Are you, are you, well, actually, let me ask a question about what you're saying.
Sure.
You're saying finding a, a closer lot that where you can park all the time in the event of a parking ban?
Right. Well, uh, you know, and having, having spots in between one and two Prospect, if those are-
And, and that too, okay.
Right. If those are available during the, during the winter, not during the emergency ban.
Yep.
Or however, whatever the verbiage is. Um, yeah, then that would be, that would be, I think, reasonable. Um, uh, to the point about the passage though, I've, I just haven't seen it, I haven't seen it be, I haven't seen anything be more narrow than where you actually go through the stop sign at Cherry Street. And so, I'm curious as to like, how, how that's not more of, uh, more of a choke point than anywhere else on the street. Um, and also kind of like Ashley was talking about that, it seems like the parking isn't really the issue. It's the snow removal. Um, and I see other places, like, and maybe Sibley is a good example of this too, where DPW comes in with, with a loader and a dump truck and, you know, maybe you have to do one of those every, every month, every six weeks if we're getting a lot of snow. I feel like that's almost a, and similarly to passage for emergency vehicles, to do that is going to be, I think, a more thorough solution than to say that people can't park there.
Yeah. So, one of, I, so I'm not-
Yeah.
Just for information, not argument.
Sure.
So, the, the point was, we always used to do that snow removal when there was a complete winter ban. You could just go out and do it whenever. Um, and so, what, what typically happens is you have the snow event and the crew's out all night doing their thing. And so, it isn't always the next night that they can get out and do it. They're exhausted. They're, so it might be a couple nights later. So, we call a second ban for snow removal. And the compliance in the second ban is, you know, we'll, we'll end up towing 50, 60 cars or it might be only three cars during an actual storm. People just will ignore it. They'll say, well, it's not snowing. I don't need to do it. And so, we, so you either end up towing cars or you don't get the snowbank removed. And so, then it freezes and it becomes this problem. So, if people, if everyone actually complied when, and it's not just these two areas, it's, you know, the whole down, you know, it's all over.
Sure.
And, and so, I, you know, and I think the council's been clear and I think even staff gets it that, you know, the, the full ban is extremely difficult for, for people. Um, you know, I don't know what people did up to four years ago, what, what folks where you live did all winter or where, where you live. I have no idea how, how they managed that. But that's, that was what we did. And we had many, many beautiful nights where there was no snow on the ground and no one could park. And that, that prompted the change to try to make it friendlier for people. And I think what you're seeing now is, is residual tweaking of where did we miss? Where could it be fine-tuned? And um, that's why these conversations are helpful. And I think we can, we can go look at these areas between now and the next meeting and see if there's anything.
Um, Ashley, and then we'll get to your question.
I just want to make sure that I am correct, that the first in essence, like house and a half of Sibley, if you're headed down the hill before you get to the stop sign, it's like the house and a half before the stop sign has no parking, right? There's like a sign that says no parking here at a corner. Is that right? I think. It's so funny, I drive there all the time and I like couldn't, I cannot distinctively remember whether it's there or not, but I'm pretty sure it is. Um, so, and then there are, if, if, so I know that there's three, there's those first three houses. So, there's five houses on Sibley total that would be, that would be before College Street that would be impacted. Um, do we know how many uh, units are in those five properties in that area on Sibley?
So, we own eight and 10. So, there's two.
So, there's, there's two units there.
And nobody parks.
Yeah, there's two units there. There's, I think, four next door.
So, six.
Six has at least four, if not.
So, there's five. So, that, so that's, okay. So, there's five units in one building.
And I'm not sure. How many are in four?
Behind the building.
Four, I think four has at least four.
Yeah.
Do you know your? The next door. Number four. Number six, you're at number six? And then you said there's five units there?
So.
And then number four has, I think, four, but I'm not sure.
Okay. So, it's, it's more than, they're more than single-family homes or duplexes.
Correct.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to make sure that my math.
And where do they park when there's a full ban?
Well, I think that's, I mean, but that's a once in a while thing as opposed to, and I-
The corner Berry and Granite, there's a gigantic parking space there that all these cars, I mean, they all park in there and-
I think the landlord rented spaces, landlord for six at one point. I don't know this year rented spaces.
I just, that's, that's, I mean, I know, I know we're talking about this now. It, I mean, I, I know renters like, you know, that's part of the, you know, things are going to change in your community. I also have a lot of appreciation for the fact that I would have made different decisions if there were no parking because I have to have act, I mean, I, I used to leave for work at 5:00 AM when I commuted and, you know, the prospect of walking in the snow, you know, I had to walk to City Hall a few times. And I would have made very different choices and I, I would have been, I would be, if I were in this situation today and, you know, because sometimes I have to work late and if I get home late and there's no parking there, I mean, that means City Hall lot, if there's spaces or, you know, trying to find a friend. And I, I wish that we, if we were going to take this up, had taken this up sooner because it feels fundamentally unfair to me that someone enters into a lease agreement, you know, with the understanding that this is, this is the situation. We know that it could change, but you are, you know, you're stuck in a lease now. And I, I just, I'm, I'm mindful that, you know, there are those of us that are, that don't have to worry about it for reasons, but then there's, are some for whom that is a significant impediment to sort of life right now. And I just, I don't know what the solution is to that, but it feels really wrong to me to just kind of look at folks who entered into a rental agreement based on a certain understanding and, and now that is changing through no fault of theirs. And certainly, you know, the landlord isn't changing that unilaterally. Um, but that's a, I, I think that's a significant concern.
Heather Corey again. Um, yes, thank you. It's, it's not just one house being affected on Lower Sibley Ave. Um, there are plenty of other renters on that street. Um, I think it's challenging that um, someone that does not live there is speaking um, against letting renters park on the street. Um, I will say there were plenty of parking bans last winter where there was no plowing done on Sibley Ave. And that's a challenge as well. Um, I think it's also unfair that I would need to park further up on Sibley Ave. Um, and it's really treacherous right there. There's a house, uh, the yellow house where the, that big massive tree came down and it is like a sheet of ice at the end of their driveway and down the sidewalk. And I don't think that, that's fair that every night of the winter, that's what I'm going to have to do and, you know, risk falling myself and then getting across College and Sibley, which is also just a sheet of ice from water cascading down the sidewalk.
Thank you. All right. So, uh-
You don't live there.
I do. I'm there every day.
So, let's not have that argument. This is a public discussion.
All right. So, um, uh, we could have a, move to a motion to, actually, I'm going to close the public hearing. Um, and uh, wondering if there's feedback that you would like to give the city manager regarding how, if you want to look into anything or, you know, make any changes. I mean, we've talked about looking into exempting the, between one and, and two Prospect Street. Um, is there any other changes that people are interested in or, um, I mean, I know Ashley, you're objecting to it generally. Um, but are there any other thoughts from other folks who haven't said anything yet? Or is there a motion?
I have, I have a question.
Okay. Yep.
Despite my continued opposition, I'm wondering if there is, what the city has for parking spaces down that far. And the last ones that I can think of are the Co-op on Stonecutters Way, but they're the ones right before the Co-op parking lot, I think.
On the street, the public street parking?
Yes.
And I don't know if those are, well, those aren't all full ban. We can look at that.
I guess, so if the, if this is going to happen and it seems as though there are enough votes for that to happen, I just, I'm putting it out there that like, it would seem that there may be something that the city could do, at least for now, so that, you know, landlords can figure something out and so that it doesn't result in, you know, forcing the folks who are impacted on the lower end to like, make a significant disruption to wherever it is that they have to park and-
Well, Ashley, to that point, I, I was looking at the map of places where people can bar, uh, can park during a parking ban. And I had thought that the spaces on Stonecutters Way, sort of across from Allen Lumber, were in the spaces where you can always park. But it's not showing up, at least on the map that I was able to, to uh, pull up on the city's website, which makes me wonder like, is that, is that still-
I don't know.
The case? I, I had remembered that as being a space. So, if it's, um, that, it would be good to clear, I would love to, if we're going to, you know, talk about this again, um, I'd love to clarify that point because that, uh, at the very least, uh, we could clarify in the city map that that is available if it is, uh, or consider opening that up if it's not. But, um, anyway, uh, other thoughts or comments from the council?
I, I might, my ask would just be that it be actually like preferential spaces for folks who live in the unit, for those that are in those units who have a car right now that does not include off-street parking, that if there were a way to designate, you know, X number of spaces at 90.
I don't know if you have any mechanism for doing that. Um, but in any case, Jack?
I think people have made some valid concerns that I hope we can discuss more, but for now, I move that we schedule a second public hearing on this proposed ordinance. And based on the timing, I assume it would be next week, which isn't very much time, but I know that there are also concerns with uh, getting the notice out to people so it can be effective. So, my motion would be that the second public hearing would be next week.
Well, it could be, I mean, you could do it in January. Um, it just be, wouldn't be a month of, the big middle of winter where it wasn't resolved.
So, sorry, your motion is to have it at the next meeting?
On the 18th, Jan-, on December 18th.
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Um, thank you all for your very thoughtful comments and uh, we'll maybe see you back next week potentially.
And we will, um, council knows this, but you folks witnessed, our staff team meets every Thursday morning after these meetings and debriefs what happened. So, we will, and the chief, police and fire chief are here. So, we will spend some time seeing what, what we can come up with. Because it certainly makes, you know, I get the situation.
Can you go send out another notice about the next public hearing?
Yes. And it, right now, it's just, they just voted it'll be next Wednesday.
Okay. Uh, yes, Donna?
There was also a statement from this gentleman, I thought. He was asking not to do the snow storage at number 67.
All of that.
Is that included?
I didn't mean to, I was looking at Ms. Corey, but I meant all the comments that were raised will have to go in and-
Okay, good.
Evaluate.
Uh, yes.
Just, I have a clarification. So, you, you want to add the note part of where to go by Allen Lumber, those spaces, what we can add, is my clear?
Uh, but I'm-
Let's just take a look at the options.
Yeah, I'm interested in that, but um, if that's not an option, that's okay. But let's look at it. So, okay, great. All right. Thank you all. Yes, well, let's take a little break and then we'll go into the budget. Okay. Our last uh, regular item is the budget. So, I'm going to, actually, I'm going to move right there.
There you go.
And uh, take your time.
Thanks. Um, first of all, I would like to start by apologizing that we don't have more detail for you. Um, as you have been told in advance, the, uh, the budget this year was particularly challenging and we really were working on numbers. Um, I was actually, you know, home working on them last night. We were tweaking some today. We met this afternoon on our capital and equipment plan, um, to try to get that straightened out. So, this is really rolling out. We, but where we're at, we feel like we're pretty comfortable proposing. My original plan for tonight had been to um, share our tale of woe with you. And when we first, when we first laid out the budget, we, we had a very large increase, as, as most of you know. And I think for, for the folks that are watching, the biggest uh, uh, challenge we had this year was our health and our, and our workers' comp insurance, which really was about a three and a half, you know, that comprised about three and a half percent increase in the budget just on its own. And so, we first looked at trying to do everything that we could, that we wanted to do, that you wanted to do and maintain our services and, and at least keep things level where they were. We were up in a five and a half to six percent tax increase, which I think most of us felt were, was not going to fly here. Uh, and then we took a look at how to get it at least to about, last year, we had a four cent increase, about 3.7% tax increase. So, how do we get it back into that area? And that was pretty scary in terms of meeting our goals. And then we said, well, you know, inflation is running about two, I think, in fact, it came out today, it's 2.1%, but I think it was like 1.9%. But it was about 2%. So, what does it look like if we get it to 2%? And that was, you know, a, a, a major change in how we did that. So, my plan tonight was to come and sort of lay out these range of things and say, give us some direction, you know, what, what do you want? But instead, uh, we, we tweaked and we worked and we uh, came up, as I said, really, this is sort of hot off the press. Uh, so I'm just going to give you an outline tonight and tell you where we're at. We'll have your budget books for you hopefully by the end of the week, uh, certainly by Monday. Plenty, in advance of next week's meeting, so you can look at all the detail. Uh, but I think I can hit the high notes. But to, to cut to the chase, which is actually in the last slide, uh, we're at a, at a budget, a tax percent increase of about 3.6%, which is really 100% due to uh, the, the insurance increases. So, basically holding the line and everything else. increases, so basically holding the line on everything else. And the tax rate, I think, is around four or 4.1 cents. So that's, that's where we're at, and it includes most of what you want, not everything. So I'll just walk down through it. I don't know if we need to turn the lights out, can everybody see this fine? You want them out?
I, no.
She doesn't.
I don't.
You don't?
No, I would like them on.
Scared of the dark?
No, I'm not afraid of the dark anymore, my monsters are real, but, no, it's just, it's hard, like, for my eyes to adjust.
So, basically, you know, a lot of this is just the dog and pony show, but it's the FY21 budget. Obviously, our goal is to implement the strategic plan. We've, we've had a commitment about our capital and equipment funding plan, and as some of you may remember, that last year, we originally planned to increase it 50,000 last year, and then we compromised that we would do 25 last year and another 25 this year. So our goal was to honor that commitment, deliver our responsible services, and again, this year, our major challenge was the insurance costs. Just a reminder, I mean, this is hard to read, but just, we do have a strategic plan, we do have key areas and different strategies, we're going to go into that in a little bit more detail. So when we look at what we've got in the budget under our community prosperity, we've maintained the $100,000 in funding for the mobiliar development plan, we've, I actually meant to update that from last year, that second bullet, but we have not touched our planning and zoning staff, so we have new zoning, we're working on a master plan, and we're implementing the TIF district. Hopefully, we'll have some projects this year that we can bring forward later in the Under environmental stewardship, we've continued the $5,000 for MEAC, we have stormwater projects in our capital plan, we have the GMT circulator bus included, although that may well turn into being the on-demand transit funding, I think they're counting on that. So we left the funding in, so we would have that ability to talk about it. We do need to talk about the energy planning grant, we did not get it, and as of today, we didn't have the funding included in the budget, we think we may have found a place for it in the capital plan to fund some or all of it, so that's a little bit of a question mark, we'll know more about that certainly by next week. Our inclusive equity, equitable and welcoming community, we have, the community fund is funded, actually, a slight increase, three or 4,000 that they had requested, we have the 10,000 that you've already included for the social equity contract, and we funded, again, Feast, Mobiliar Alive, and our community enhancements. Sustainable infrastructure, we've, we do have the additional $25,000 for CIP in there, the water and sewer plan is, continues to be followed. You may recall, we had a presentation about needs of DPWs, so we had a retire, a supervisor retiring, and the plan is to convert that to a line staff, to have an extra plow person. And we also have a contract right now, private contract for collecting trash in the downtown, and the plan, the proposal right now is to convert that to another full-time position, have DPW assume the, the trash pickup work and downtown cleanup, but that would free up another extra person for plowing in the winter. So that was, there was a slight increase over the contract price, but we felt that it, it was worth it to try to deal with the snow plowing issues. Thoughtfully planned built environment, we again have the downtown improvement district funding, we have our funding for downtown projects in the capital plan, and we, we kept the 20,000 for public art, we had the presentation tonight, I think they thought it was 25,000, but it was 20, and we've retained that in, in this year's budget. For more housing, again, last year, we funded 110,000, I know it wasn't as much as what people had hoped, but it had been a significant increase, and we've kept that in the budget for this year. And we, again, have our TIF program, which we hope will lead to some additional housing. Public health and safety, we have our share of our social worker to be partly grant-funded and partly shared with the city of Berry for the public police department. Again, we've tried to anticipate public events, we've continued our paramedic program, which means, you know, we're getting more people certified in the paramedic program each year as we hire new firefighters, we are seeking to replace firefighters with paramedics, so we're trying to incrementally grow the program, and that includes, it, it's great because not only does it provide additional service, but we can charge higher ambulance bills, which are insurance covered, because we're providing a higher level of service, we can bring in more revenue, but there's also much more costly equipment and the drugs that are used and those sorts of things. So it's, so that's taken in account. Four, we're continuing Project Safe Catch. Responsive and responsible government, we are continuing communications efforts and actually hoping we can ramp some up, but there's no specific funding, our impulio wellness remains funded, and basically keeping the same service levels, including the good old Faithful Bridge article. Okay, Tom, you having good with that?
I'm in no position.
So, in the strategic plan, we had some specific budget items, you may recall, there were certain things that we talked about, and in fact, if you look at the list we put on your desk every week, which has the upcoming meeting, there's been this list all year of, you know, items to talk about at budget time, so I felt that we should probably talk about those. The current, so the first one on the list, at least as the order I wrote them down, is to upgrade the streetlights to LED. Right now, we have a chance to buy the lights and ballasts for a really good price from Efficiency Vermont, so we're planning to do that. We can't really do the full changeout without redoing all our wiring, so that, we're looking, we're still costing that out and looking at options and doing cost benefit, but we're eyeing a possible $140,000 bond vote, or, we're trying to figure the best way to structure this, but it might be in November, so there's no money for that part of it yet, but definitely on the front burner. CSO projects, we're following our plan, there are some in the capital plan, the highest priorities, the equity consultant is in the budget. Interesting that we had actually identified that in last year's strategic plan as a need, and then came up and you funded it, so good for you. Downtown master plan is being completed, there is funding in, in the capital plan for coordinated signals, one of the first items of that. So as the plan gets completed and we start looking at really restructuring intersections and those kind of things, but one of the things that happens to happen is those high-tech signals that all talk to each other, and so I think we have $25,000 for those signal upgrades. Emergency management, we did increase funding this year, just to reflect costs that we've actually had, it's not a drastic increase, but it is an increase. Alternative fuel, the plan is to purchase alternative fuel when it's available, and we do have a police hybrid, that's actually in this current year, it's not in next year's budget, although our plan would be to order, we have, we replace a cruiser every year, so we would ideally have a hybrid next year as well, assuming this one works. It's huge delay, right now, chief could explain it better than I, but there's a kind of a shortage in cruisers right now, some of the companies are getting out of the market, and so your choices of sizes and options and things, and we've, we've had this car in order for a long time, hasn't shown up yet. So, you know, it used to be, they were more City End type things, and now people have gone to the more four-wheel drive and the, those things, and Chevy's pretty much gotten out of the market, and they used to be the market, so it's, it's just one of the, you know, that's the way it is. Parking garage operations, obviously, we've just deferred that until we actually know when it's going to be open and functioning, so we didn't spend a lot of time on that. Housing trust fund, we maintained funding for that. Infrastructure, we increased the 25,000. Personnel plans, we haven't completed that, but we do have updated personnel costs in the budget, and we've tried to anticipate some of the changes that are likely to occur. As I mentioned, the social worker would, and again, these are all things we'd called out last spring, the city shares in the budget. Public Wi-Fi was on the list, we took a look at that, it's going to cost 60 to 90,000 for installation, plus some annual costs. So we didn't take that much further, you know, obviously, if the council wants to pursue that, we can, but it's not included in the budget, simply due to cost and what our staff at least believed were the priorities, so. Recreation center, you've seen the presentation, decision is pending from you folks about that, probably something we'll talk about next week, we'll be getting the updated numbers, you know, it's going to be ballpark, $6 million bond, I think that, the key there is that would be a $300,000 bond payment the first year, first full year. One way to look at it is that typically, we, we put those into the capital plan, so they're, they fall within the total capital funding, so in that regard, it's good, taxes don't necessarily go up. The bad news is that's 300,000 less that we have to spend on other projects, so, or we could choose to increase the capital plan to help pay for this, so I think that's a policy decision. Confluence Park, we have approved a design, and we don't have any real hard numbers yet, so there's no thing. And Saban's pasture, there's also no firm plan in place, you know, who knows, maybe if some of those come to fruition, if we have to have a vote in November, if some of those could be packaged up then, possibly TIF projects or those kinds of things. So those were the, the list of budget items in the strategic plan. What's not included, although I, I may be going back on this, right, is the energy plan, which was a $35,000 cost. I may have different news about that next week, I don't know, but right now, in my head, it's not included. The homelessness task force, I just heard today, might be asking for as much as $57,000, I think it's broken out into discrete asks, but total together, so that's on the list, there's nothing in there, not even the 10,000 for the shelters right now. Ash Borer funds, last year, we funded positions, and then we had also done a $20,000 allocation, I think there was some thought that that allocation was intended to be carried forward every year, wasn't the understanding that, at least the finance director and I had, they've only spent 4,000, there's $16,000 left, so there are, there's $10,000 for the medications or whatever, the inoculations, that's not in there. Biannual, like, citizen survey, we were going to include it this year, we haven't done the one this current year that we had said we were going to do out of reserve, and we were going to then put 5,000 a year away to do them every three years, but didn't make the cut. Again, the public Wi-Fi, not in there, the LED streetlights, I already talked about, rec building, Confluence Park and Saban, so those are items to be considered. So all that taken, I already mentioned that, the projected property tax rate would be a 3.6 percent increase, 4.1 cents, this is, I think last year was four, I think that's almost exact, this last year might have been 3.7 cents last year, but right around that same, excuse me, 3.7 percent last year. The average tax bill would be increased $93 for this, and again, really, that's all, that is the hit from the health insurance, everything else is kept even for everything else, and then our other rates are simply as planned, District Key, Water Sewer, all those kind of things, so those are the main municipal rates. This is our schedule next week, we'll have our first real in-depth budget workshop, staff will be here, you'll have a chance to see detail and those kinds of things, and then we're doing that again on the 8th, and then the 15th is our first public hearing on the budget and the warning ballot articles and all those kind of things. And then Thursday night, January 23, we all remember, it's always a Thursday night, the last one, because, why? Come on, here's a quiz, who remembers why?
Has to be so many days.
That's it. Petition deadline.
Yes.
So that's the deadline for petitions, so we, if we have it on Wednesday, then we might have to come back to accept petitions on Thursday, so we've just decided to do it all in one night. So that is the 40-day prior to the vote deadline day for finalizing any ballot items, petitions, anything else. And then March 3rd is the voting, and then early voting to start in February. So that's our schedule, I'm happy to answer any questions to the extent that I can, like I said, I don't have huge detail in front of me, nor do you, but I'm happy to answer at least any big picture questions as I am able.
Donna, and then Jack, do you have something?
I don't know if they're big enough questions, but when you were going along, it's like when you talked about the lights, is, are we going to see like a map? I mean, we've had, I've had a lot of constituent complaints, particularly on, out or on State Street and some other downtown locations about the lights not being strong enough, focused and that, so if we're going to do this, are we going to also consider meeting that demand that we're hearing?
Correct, so the, I mean, obviously, we would show you, I mean, for us to cost this out appropriately, we need to know what lights and what the cost is, so some of this, you know, with LED lighting, you save quite a bit on electricity and lease costs, but there's an upfront cost, so we've got to calculate the payback, but also there is an improvement in light quality, at least some people think so, not everyone likes LED lighting, but we seem to think, you know, the, the ones that we have tried as trials seem to work fine and provide sufficient light, so.
Since we're doing the wiring, we can do some replacement of lights?
It would be taking the downtown core lights and changing them all to LED, it's going to be a pretty substantial project, it wouldn't be just changing a couple lights.
And then, my other question on the same slide was about, you said, you talked about the coordinated signals, does that include a brand-new one at Berry Street in Maine?
I don't know.
Or just the existing ones being changed?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, we, like I said, we literally put those capital numbers together, but we'll take a note of the question and make sure we get back to you.
So we have Jack, then Ashley, and then Connor? And, what was that, a hand? Okay.
This is, Bill, this is pretty encouraging, and it looks better than I had feared, so I.
Us too.
He's going to scare us every year now.
No.
Add a boy and add a girl to the team for that.
Yeah, well, we, our team did a lot of hard work, and Todd Proventure decided to go out with a bang, really.
Thank you, Todd.
Yeah.
Yep.
Swan song.
I'm, I'm wondering about the experience we had last year with, with Public Works and the, and the water main breaks, and do we have all our expenses in, including any kind of contracted work that we might have had done for things that weren't able to be done in-house, and how do we feel about what we're putting in for this year?
Sure, so all of those, those are all in the water fund, this is generally the general fund that we're talking about here, so those are funded particularly by water rates, we are feeling the, the water budget is sufficient to cover those, and again, with, you know, we have a 50-year plan to deal with those, so every year, it's replacing, either replacing or putting in reserve funds to replace lines, sometimes it's more efficient to wait and do a bigger chunk, but the, the approved plan was to basically take cost of living plus an additional percent each year on the rate, so that we could, we could be building up sufficient funds, so all of that water repair work and sewer repair work, which is in the sewer fund, are, are addressed through that. We do have, we do have a, a water and sewer benefit fund, the, the two cents that we put on, and that can be allocated between the two, and I think we may be looking at reallocating that, just to make sure it's put in the right place, but it's no impact to the ratepayer.
Is, is that sewer benefit, the fund that's paid by people like me who pay a charge, but we have a septic tank, and so we just get pumped?
Yes.
Ashley, the social worker, the shared social worker, has the city of Berry put that in their proposed budget?
We understand they are going to, that was the communication, obviously, it doesn't work if either community doesn't do it, so obviously, if they don't, then we can reduce that out of our budget, but the, we understand there's going to be a fairly significant ask for police services in Berry, so this would be a minor part of it.
I was going to say, I think it was six officers?
Four, I believe.
Four?
No, Tony.
So the other, I just want to be mindful, working in the social services profession, that $32,000 a year is not a.
No, it, it, that's also to match grant funds from the state.
Oh, so it's 64?
It's some larger number, I don't know what the percentage is.
I was like.
But the two cities are, the 32 local shares, the Berry-Mobiliar share, then we're splitting that, and then there's another.
Looks like Tony has something to say about this.
Yeah. So first of all, I'll answer your question, the last word I had from Chief Bombardier was there's a placeholder, you know, it's up to $20,000, it's, last he knows, it's, at least it's still there, because absolutely needs both communities. The employee would be a Washington County mental health clinician, and, and the, so the ask, the primary ask, and what we're hoping for through the legislature, through appropriations, is the other funding from that, so it wouldn't actually.
I thought we heard we got that.
No, not yet. And then, and, but in addition to that, for long-term sustainability, we've also are working with, in particular, I reached out to Eric Miller from, from UVM Medical Center, because we also think that they should be, you know, and they want to be a partner as well as we provide, as a community, better care for these people, so that's kind of the makeup, provided all this comes true. The concern is any one leg of the stool, the whole thing does not happen, so.
Cool, thank you.
And then my endless shame. Cool. Thank you. And then my endless, shameless plug about a 25% increase to healthcare. I accept that it is what it is. It is just unacceptable to me that health insurance companies can literally, like, hold people hostage.
So I do appreciate that. And I would, you know, my personal opinion is that the health insurance system in the country probably could change. It's obviously, as a professional, I have no opinion on it. But that said, last year, we had almost no increase, which is one of the reasons why we were able to do what we did in the budget and get a lot of this stuff in. Now, I'm not saying 25% is great or anything else, but, you know, over a two-year period, I think there were series, certainly years when we would get 12 or 13% each year, and it's crazy. The struggle we have, and I think we have to understand this, and I'm not trying to paint insurance companies as good or bad people, but we have a small pool of 110 employees, of which only, I think, 70 or 80 are actually in insured. Other people take the buyout. So we have a very small insurance pool. And so they collect, you know, whatever, I'm going to make these numbers up a little bit, but $2 million, let's say, or more, $3 million from the city in premiums. And last year, we had claims of $4 or $5 million.
Because people are human and get-
No, that's right. And that's what insurance is for. I get that. But if you're looking at this, you know, if you're not covering those claims, you've got to get the money back somehow. I mean, they paid them, don't get me wrong. You know, the insurance claims are paid. So there, you know, they look at our experience. So, and this is what insurance markets do, right? You get, you get an automobile accident, your insurance goes up because they had to pay out a claim. And so this is, this is the way it goes. I think what we've really, and we looked at every possible option. I'm sure Todd would be happy to explain to you all the different angles we looked at and at the end concluded that none were better than, for the short run, than what we're doing now. I think we've got to figure out a way to get to a larger pool.
My frustration was definitely not with any of the work that the city has done. I am just, I really, well, see, but I think that, to me, saying that we can't do anything is, and I understand, like, the size of Montpelier versus like the insurance industry, I understand all of those sort of practical, pragmatic things. But as someone who has been incredibly sick and could have died recently, you know, the fact that we, as a community, have to accept a 25% increase to offer our employees the care and coverage that we believe is adequate is unconscionable. I mean, in what universe do I go in and ask for a raise at 25% and be like, I'm getting it? Like, that's not real life. Like, that's not how the world works. And I know that insurance companies have the power and authority to do this because they're huge, but-
And it's a marketplace. So, you know, we could have opted not to take it, but we couldn't find any, any sufficient substitute.
But I think, though, that-
So our choice was to not insure employees.
And I'm not saying that, but what I am saying is that this is an opportunity for Montpelier to, like, make a point to, to other areas that a 25% increase, I mean, so if it's 25% this year, and then next year, it's the 12 to 13%. I mean, at some point, like, it just becomes an option that is not sustainable.
Well, I, you know, I'd agree with that. And I'd simply say, we've had this conversation many, 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 many times.
I'm just loud. I'm getting loud for Blue Cross because I'm done.
Well, I don't think it's just, you know, I have been paying, this time of year, I pay attention to what other communities and school districts and others, and I'm, you know, I hear budgets that are coming out and across the board, I'm either reading or hearing about, well, they had this huge insurance increase. So it's a real problem. I mean, we're hoping maybe we can get it to the state pool, but even then, you know, you're still at the mercy of, you know, their insurance people across, so.
I think that's, that, it's my, my disagreement is more of a policy issue than in terms of any sort of city anything. I mean, I know that we offer solid health insurance, and I have no interest in changing that. But I really encourage people, I mean, if the ask, if, if insurance companies can keep doing this, this ask is going to keep coming. And at some point, it is not going to be something that people who, like, who want to live here can continue to afford in tax increases, whether it's property taxes or rent. And that's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Connor?
Just questions or ideas as well?
Oh, anything.
Anything, it's fine.
Okay.
Open discussion.
Yeah, the same as the social worker one. Has Ashley got that answered? Might be unpopular. How much do we spend on the strategic planning retreat at the beginning of the year for the council?
I want to say around $10,000.
Okay.
Don't have that in the budget this year.
Oh, really?
We didn't last year. We took out a fund balance. But actually, we have a new assistant city manager who's a strategic planning person. So I was thinking of having her lead it this year. See how that goes.
Cool.
Trial by fire.
Okay. Have we done, like, an analysis? I know we contract out for legal services, and I see a lot of municipalities have in-house city attorneys. Have we ever done, like, just cost analysis to see if we'd actually save money by bringing that in-house?
We have looked at that. And, you know, this last year, we've had a really high amount of legal fees. The issue that we have, so I, you know, the only one I really know, well, Burlington, I think, has been South Burlington. The only ones I really know that have in-house attorneys. Burlington, South Burlington has two. And I've talked to them about that. But then they still contract out for other issues. So one of the issues we have is that, you know, there's sort of general legal work, contracts, easements, you know, the kind of, those sorts of things, general, you know, do we have the authority to do X? I call it general municipal law type thing. But then we have, you know, it's more specialized zoning, land use, Act 250 stuff. We have personnel, labor law. We have, you know, any environmental law. So depending on the topic, depending on the topic, you know, we're using different attorneys or different firms for different things. So, you know, could we get a person for the price we're paying? Maybe. Are they specialized, you know, do they have the ability to handle all the different issues? I don't, I don't know. So I think, so far, we've, you know, I don't think it's been enough. And like I said, I talked to South Burlington, and they said even with two full-time, they're still contracting out specialized work on top of that. So, you know, I haven't seen it that it made sense for us to do that.
And last, at some point, I'd like to propose that we have up to a $10,000 contract with a lobbying firm, because we have so many moving pieces at the State House right now, in the social worker position, we got microtransit, we got rail, we got a ton of things in the appropriations bill, that I think it makes sense, it would actually be an investment to bring down state funds in some of these areas, if we had some, something limited in scope, where somebody was in the building watching, said, hey, Chief Picos, we need you up in government operations, like Tuesday at 10, you know? So just consideration with the council.
Cool. Thanks. Lauren?
I was just thinking about the DPW. And so you have a supervisor converted to line staff and, because a supervisor is leaving, so replacing that with a line staff, and the conversion of the contract into, which I appreciate, I'm really glad to see some work being done trying to address some of the staffing challenges that DPW has been facing. Could you describe how the, so with, with one fewer supervisor, like, what, can you just describe what the structure of the department would be? And knowing that Donna was kind of taking on two roles, does that all fall onto her then?
Right. So part of that had to do with the restructuring that we did. There is, so the supervisor, Brian Tuttle, who's retiring, has been the superintendent, we call it. And so oversees the water, sewer, and street crews. And then there's another supervisor that oversees all of our equipment, mechanics, those kinds of things. And then supervisors at the water plant and the wastewater plant. But the, the street crew has a foreman, the water, water and sewer crew has a foreman, and they're very capable. So we're not sure they need the direct, you know, somebody over them. When, when we brought Donna in, we also restructured underneath so that we, we have sort of Kurt, who is really oversees all of our water and sewer operations, including the plants. And then Zach is taking a higher look over the, the other operations as well as doing some engineering. So we felt that between having Zach, and Tom is still here. Tom's now stationed at the garage, even though he's a project, he's going to be, he's in the budget as a part-time project manager. But still, we have eyes on the ground in the garage. So we felt that the guys that are doing the foreman, the oversight work, are actually handling the day-to-day work, and they need, they need boots on the ground more than they need a supervisor. They're capable of doing it. And we've got sufficient staff to handle that.
All right. So I have a few questions. I made a couple notes as we were just going through these slides. So early on, under the one that was community prosperity, it says implement TIF district, but there's not really anything to implement at this point.
No. I mean, so the TIF, so first of all, in all candor, that was left over from last year. And I forgot to take it out. So there's that. That's the truthful answer. But we do have-
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
We do have, we do have the TIF district, and we are actively in discussions with potential projects. So along with MDC and others. So even though there's nothing right now to show, to talk about, you know, it's possible, and that we could be coming forward, and that would normally be another TIF bond to front the infrastructure to get back through the TIF fund. So it is happening, and we also have a fair, you know, we have to keep track of all the increases in value. So there, there's ongoing work with TIF, even if we're not doing-
Fair enough. Under the next one, environmental stewardship, stormwater projects is listed. I have faith that they are happening and continuing to be done. I'm just going to reiterate that I would love to, I, and this is something that we've talked about before, but I would just love to have a list of things from the stormwater master plan that have been checked off. And-
And I believe that's in progress.
Okay, great.
It's been asked for.
Okay. And then that also related to that, with the no change required for the sewer benefit and the CSO benefit, it's just reminded me that we were perhaps going to have a conversation about the financing for stormwater plans. And just recognizing that time is getting short for this council. And so just trying to, is that what is meant by, I'm trying to, I don't think it's on this list.
Yeah, well, it's probably shorthand.
It could be. I mean, it could be the hazard mitigation.
No, that's something completely different. Yeah.
So just want to put it out there that I would still love to have that conversation, if at all possible.
About stormwater?
About-
A utility?
The utility, right. Should we be exploring?
So I believe, I believe that is on the front burner, you know, not to make excuses, but we've had a big change at the top at DPW, and we're having a change in finance, and those are both very key positions. And so I think managing those transitions is probably taken higher priority than this at this time. But definitely, a utility is something that we're on our radar.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm at least mentioning it, because it is still of interest. And not to say that, like, we have to do that. I just want to mention that it's an option that I think is still worth exploring. Other, there's a couple other things. One possibility for the LED streetlights is what if, what if that was its own separate bond? That, I don't know how the council would feel about that necessarily.
So that is what we're envisioning.
Oh, you are?
We, but we're just not quite ready to, I think if we're going to do a bond for LEDs, we should be in a position to give real clear information about the payback and the work involved, and, you know, and really do a good presentation on it. So the staff is suggesting that might be a November bond. So depending on what we choose to do with the rec center, and if we have TIF bonds, you know, we're going to, you know, and it'll be a slow election in November anyway, so it won't be much happening for the clerk. So-
Fair, fair. So, well, okay, fair enough. I'm glad that that's a part of that discussion, because especially as something that theoretically ought to be saving us money than putting it to line.
I think rather than just say we think it's going to save us money, we'd rather be able to say here's the numbers.
Right, and be able to show it. And in addition, I appreciate Donna, you're bringing up, you know, should we be adjusting any lighting along with that plan? And I know we had also, just want to bring up for the, say, the council as well, I had some comments about the lack of a streetlight where the new bike path extension crosses Berry Street. And that would be a great, sort of obvious place to, to do, to have an additional streetlight. And I could picture that easily also being built into that, if it were a bond, or whatever that cost is. So that's, that's great. And I think those are my only comments for now. I will have a question for the council about if, if we decide to go in the direction of a rec building bond, if we want to have any extra meetings for the public about that, particularly calling that out and discussing it. But we don't have to jump to that for now. One thing that I think would be useful, unless you're, there's anything else, one thing that I think might be useful for this discussion is, I'd love to hear from people about how they're feeling about this proposed budget plan. Are there items that are in it that you think should not be? Are there things-
So to that point, actually, you just reminded me, you will be getting by email probably tomorrow. This is the, some of you may remember this worksheet from last year. So this has been updated. This is the thing where you go and just click these Xs on the left and put items either in or out of the budget, and you get to see the tax increase. And we're just, we've got to, like, again, this is, we're really, this stuff is just rolling out today even. So you can see some of the things on the bottom, the items. And we're just going to make it a little more user-friendly as far as if you want to change the amounts. But this is, you know, almost done, as you can see. And we will have this to you to play with in advance this week. And it will be, like we did last year, we'll have it live on the screen as we talk through it. You'll get your books with all the detail and the summary of all this. It'll, obviously, it'll be what you've just heard, but it'll be something that you can actually look at.
Would it be possible to, I know this would be an easy thing to set out via email to all of us, but also hoping that we can potentially add this as a file to the website?
I think we did that last year.
Did we do that? Okay. So that people could, you know, the public can do the same process, go through the same exercise. Okay, that's great. Thank you. It looks like there's some comments. I'm happy to pause. Well, so based on, you know, we're, we're going to get this soon. One possibility is if, if people want to make a pitch for anything extra or-
Put on the list.
Yeah, or, or something that, you know, we should take out, whatever it is, that seems like that'd be probably an appropriate thing to do at this point. And then we'll get into playing, unless, unless people want to take the time to, to do this right now.
Go through this?
Go through this. Yeah, I think we should, we should each have some time with this document to, to see how it looks if we add or subtract things or whatever.
Are there some lines, are there some lines that function that have nothing in it that we could put something in it? I mean, as a formulas work?
I think so. I'll-
Do you know what I mean? If I wanted-
Like, if you want to add something down at the bottom, like here-
Well, she talked about adding stuff, but unless-
Right. So we could have, like, Donna's, and then if, and you wanted $10,000, and then you put an X. So I'm doing this live. I have no idea what's going to happen here. Sure enough.
Okay, cool.
So then you can add-
So we can add things that aren't there?
Right.
Okay. Great.
You just got to remember to check it on the side. The X is the key. That's what triggers. So.
I know.
And same thing with here. If you want to cut something, you take it out. And if, so, yeah.
I know, Connor, you'd made a pitch for something, and if anyone else wants to advocate for something, it'd be great. But go ahead, Donna.
How do we know what you already have? Like, okay, my concern is parks. We did this thing of funding a full person, but we wouldn't let them start for a full year. And we said we were going to then put in a person to follow up and fill Alex.
Those are funded.
Okay, so how-
You'll, you'll get that detail. So that's-
Okay, all right. Great.
Things that were sort of operational that you had approved last year that were going along, those are, you know, we, we would have flagged those if something had changed, if we had not funded or continued that. But the idea was this is, anything that's kind of an add-on or something unusual is on these lists, like the social worker, or calling out that we changed DPW a little bit. Otherwise, the assumption is it's, is what we've, same level that we've been at. But when you get the actual book and my written summary, that'll call that out in more detail. But that's a good question.
Just in terms of the things not included, it sounds like maybe there's some work being done on the energy plan, but that definitely is a big priority. And if we're going to hit 2030, if we don't start doing a real plan now, there's no way we're going to do it. So that would be something I want to look at what our options are. And I mean, maybe there are possible- are possible other grants or things that we could explore, but would love to keep a focus on trying to get that funded.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why we put it on the list, is, you know, we just found out about the, the grant funding pretty close to the budget time, we, the grant would've been for 22,000, and we would've had to make up the difference, which we had planned to do in the current fiscal year, so I put it on this list of unfunded, and literally today, we were, which is why I'm hedging a little bit on this, but as we were doing the capital plan, we had, we have some money in the capital plan, which, you know, may or may not be the right place for this, but times are tough, right, so, for energy projects, you know, to actually do energy efficiency projects, and we had some identified, and there was like 34,000 left, and I was like, well, that's about the plan, so, we were gonna just tweak some numbers and see if we could come in and just say, how about we just pay for that out of, you know, it's one-time money, and just pay for it out of the capital plan and get it done, and then if we can find grants to offset it, then we can free that money for other things, so, as, as a person wiser than me this week called the budget a shell game, anyway.
That would've been, go ahead, Lauren.
And I guess just, you know, so, I don't know what, what all will be in the Homelessness Task Force request, I mean, that to me is an example where advocacy at the State House for the kinds of funding that I think should be really looked at, and what can we bring to the city, and what pots of money are there, it, it does take a lot of work, so, I think trying to compile that list of state funding, I mean, the advocacy we might want around, trying to get in the state pool, I think there, there is a whole suite of things that we can look at, where could, where could we be looking for increased state funding, or ensuring that Montpelier would be on a list to get certain programs and other things, and then where, how does that fit into our city budget?
Right, and, yeah, and again, I think the, I, I can't speak particularly knowledgeably, but I understand that the, the task force asks, or, you know, so like $10,000 for the shelter expansion, some money for lockers, some money for bathrooms, you know, there's the specific items, so that when totaled together, so obviously the council could say, well, you know, we can do some, but not all, but yeah, but I, I agree, I mean, I think, you know, editorializing a little bit, you know, we're in this position because the other levels of government that are supposed to be handling this stuff aren't, and it's falling to, you know, whether it's health insurance, or homeless services, or social equity, or any of these things, it's dumping on us because there's no place else to go.
Just a quick question about the Wi-Fi, the downtown Wi-Fi proposal, was that sort of the range, like, do we get a range of, like, estimates, and that was in the range?
Well, depends, so, what, what it was, and again, there are others that could talk more knowledgeably, but you, you all had put that on the list as something you wanted to pursue, so we wanted to get prices for budget, and it was, basically, it depends on how, how wide we cast the net, so, you know, how big we make the range of downtown Wi-Fi, that's the, the price range, but then there's annual operating fee, so I just plucked out 80 out of that, 60 to 90 is a budget number, I mean, it could be more, it could be less, but, and, and to try to keep the budget in the range that we were trying to keep it in, which is where we, we came in, you know, 80 to $100,000 for, for a new and expanded thing, that, in our judgment, wasn't, but obviously, that's where you get to make those priority calls, so if you wanna put that on and raise taxes or cut something else, you go for it.
And the thing that I would, I was, I did a little research when I realized that it, it wasn't in the, the budget, although I know that it's still a fluid document, and there are organizations that offer this service, that actually partner with municipalities to, to kind of make these projects happen, so, I agree that at this point, given what we have to absorb, begrudgingly, I still stand by, that is something that might be worth exploring, because, to me, internet access is sort of a fundamental thing at this point in, in our life, you know, if you can't look online for jobs, or if you can't access, you know, your emails, for example, you know, it, it, I know that it seems very strange to say that, like, it's almost debilitating, but if you don't have access to anything, you can't get a job, you can't, you know, get life done, and so to me, that's sort of a fundamental, like, crux of, you know, what are we doing as a city to make sure that we're sort of leveling the access playing field, and so, I, I reached out to a couple of people that I know around the country who live in cities where they've implemented this, where they've partnered with organizations to see if I can get some information, to find a way where that wouldn't be the price tag that we would be paying, but that would also be reflective of our values and sort of what we're trying to do.
Cool, that's very interesting, Glenn?
I just wanna signal, I am, I think that a couple of the things on the not included list are high priorities for me, the energy plan, as Lauren mentioned, I think also the ashbore funds, it doesn't make much sense to me to, to start treating the trees and then stop, and that seems like a small enough piece that we should, we should continue that, if I'm, if I understand, that number is just to continue that preventive treatment of the, the large, high-risk street trees.
We'll get more detail on what that entails.
Well, and it looks like Alex has some-
I think we voted it true.
I clarify that now.
Oh, good, thanks.
I just sent you an email, but I'm sorry, you're not checking your emails.
I'll just bend over here, so, the ashbore request last year was meant to be year one of a two-year request, and then after that, it would fall to zero, so, that's a short story, I sent you a breakdown of the costs, but we secured some of the things that we were gonna buy this year for lower prices or through grant funding, and next year it's just planned a couple larger purchases that we felt weren't feasible in one year.
Connor?
So, is it 10,000, or is it 6,000, with the 4,000 left over?
It was, so it was supposed to be 14,000 this year, yeah, and then we, yeah, it's supposed to be 14,000, yeah.
I had, I thought we voted it for more than one year, but, we'd have to go back to the motion.
You can't, you don't vote your budget for more than one year.
No, but our commitment, I thought, was that we were gonna start, 'cause at one time we wanted more, and we were gonna commit 10,000 to try to, to do the trees, but, anyway. So, I'm glad you brought it up.
Go ahead, Glenn.
And then just the third item on that list that, that stands out for me is the Homelessness Task Force, I don't wanna steal their thunder, they're gonna come next week and, and speak to us, but I think that, that is an emergent need, that I think it's pretty clear that we need to pay attention to it and, and do what we can, regardless of whether the state is doing their job as much as we can, so, I expect to be fighting over that and, and the Public Art Commission as well.
Okay, so we're gonna get this document, play with some numbers, come back and have a conversation next week, anything further about the budget? Okay, well, thank you to, to you, Phil, but also really the rest of the staff, so grateful for all of your work with this, and, and to Todd especially, thanks for putting, putting this spreadsheet together and crunching on the numbers, and we're just very grateful, so.
I'll just say, on behalf of the staff, you know, we do work as a team to come up with this, and it's not an easy, so hats off to them for, for everyone pitching in, but also say that it's very helpful to us, you know, I know sometimes it seems long, but that strategic planning session that we go through, I mean, you can see that does guide our decisions when we're making these things, and setting those priorities is important, and as you know, it guides what comes before you, so, you know, we're hoping to even improve that more in future years, but we do try, you know, when, when we're having our conversations and we're trying to decide what to include and what not, that's kind of what we go back to and say, all right, well, you know, there's this, this is something that they said was important, and, so.
Great, well, thank you, I'm gonna move back to my other seat. Okay, so that, I think, is the end of our regular business, so, we're gonna start with council reports, done, are you okay to start?
Sure.
Thank you, you're always so, there you go.
Yes, actually, I have a few things, and one I, I have meant to brought up before is that on our slides, we saw a shared use path with a bike route sign, and internationally, I see all over the place wonderful signs that show a human pedestrian with a child holding hands with a line and a bike, which shows that it's shared, so I would hope we would move forward with a sign all throughout our shared use path that truly is a shared use path, and Kevin reminded me Downtown Streetscape Master Plan is having their meeting tomorrow night in this room, 6:00 to 7:30, and it's going to be a fluid meeting, you don't have to come and sit through all of that hour and a half, but if you show up, you'll be given an opportunity to see some of what they're working on and to share your opinion and leave, but you can stay for the whole thing if you wanna hear other people's opinions, and I wanna congratulate that the State House ice rink is gonna hopefully open before Christmas, I somehow missed that $25,000 comes out of the city rec department budget? That's what the paper reported, is that true?
To establish the rink last year.
Okay.
So, the cost for the rec center came out last year, the rec center cost right now that we're incurring, because we already purchased-
So, it, that's what I was asking, whether it was an ongoing, it just listed there?
No, the ongoing cost for the rec center is in staff right now, because we've already purchased the rink.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and you may recall, the city used to run an ice rink at the pool, the pool was frozen, we maintained that for skating, so when we switched to the rink, so, basically, the expenses we were incurring to run the pool skating has now switched to the skate, the State House skating, so, yes, we're spending money, but it's the same money we were spending for skating.
It just read $25,000 city rec department, and I went, wow, okay, and, well, okay, I didn't, maybe, fine, good, I'm glad for that clarity, the other thing, Times Argus Today had an article reporting on the state panel on racial disparities, on inequalities, and I was just reading it and how much they're struggling, so, we too are struggling, but so are they, but it'd be helpful to stay in tune with what they're doing, so, that's all.
I'm good, I'll pass.
I wanna go back to Elizabeth Parker at the beginning, I think, who was congratulating city staff on the opening of that little stretch of shared use path between the bridge and Main Street, I second that, it's really great to have that open, and today, some of the fencing that was left on that site was taken away, and it's also great, and I can't wait for that big pile of dirt to go away, so, thank you for that, I'll be at Baguio's tomorrow morning, as usual, and I want to let everyone know that I am not going to stand and run again for the seat in the spring, it's been an honor to serve with you all and to represent my friends and neighbors in District 3, and I look forward to the next few months of doing that, continuing to do that, but I will not stand up again, at least for now, two years at a time is enough for me, and I look forward to working with the city and some of the organizations that I've connected with through city council in any way that I can, so, thanks very much.
Thank you, Ashley, Pat?
One thing I wanted to mention, and I, I assume that the manager got a copy of this email, let's just take a look, but we got an email yesterday from, from a resident about Gerton Park, and it, it's, it's, the person said it's become a hangout, and part of my reaction as well, yeah, what people do with parks is, in part, hang out, but, but the place is also, by the pictures we've seen, looking pretty, pretty crummy and garbagey, and I hope we can have a response to that, so that even though it costs money to send people there to clean it up.
We cleaned it up today.
We did.
It was really bad, and there are people camping there, staying there, and we talked to some of them, and they are going to try to prevent the, some of the trashing of the place, but it, it has, you know, ever since we've opened it, really, it's, it's been a constant issue, I know there was some ask for maybe a trash receptacle, but our concern is that someone might start fires in it, and that it's a wooden structure, so, that's not gonna happen, but, yeah, it's, you know, and we don't, I, I think the city wants to be careful, I know we don't wanna be taking on permanent cleanup of the place, but it was really bad, and broken glass, and needed to be taken care of.
Great, thanks.
Can I back up on what he asked? Because I'm so glad you remembered that, I mean, the concern is that everybody have access to it, so, it's not amount of denying those that there, but how do others get an opportunity, so, I don't know if Tony or others have an idea, but I think we have to do more than just, I think we have to work on this, I think it's part of that discussion of soc- social equity.
As long as we're talking, well, I'll, I'll talk a bit more, where's my turn, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to share that following up on the decision last meeting to make an investment in the Social and Economic Justice Advisory Committee, that group met this morning, and we'll be putting some information out on Front Porch Forum for people who read that, and updating the website, but we would love if people want to get involved in the process as we develop a request for proposal for hiring the kind of expertise to help us with this process, so, anyone who is, is watching today, if you are a consultant, if you are interested in just getting involved in this group at this kind of exciting time as we develop this process, and look how we really work together as a community to make progress, and this, would love more folks to get involved, especially people who are less well-represented in city government on the group right now, all are welcome, but it'd be great to kind of get more types of voices in that process as well, so, we'll be sending out more information in different venues, but just wanted to put a plug for people who would like to get involved, we love, really appreciate that.
Cool. So, this past Saturday was the VCAN Conference in Fairleigh, Vermont, which is the Vermont Energy Committee Action Network, and it was a great, great event, lots of great workshops, just so you're aware, I ended up speaking on behalf of the city of Montpelier in terms of what, or a project that, I guess we're sort of working on, which is the movement of our trimmers, I suppose, to electric, so, thinking about how, anyway, I, I had a meeting with some folks over the summer from the rec department, and where they got to try out, they got to demo some electric weed whackers, and thought they were great, which is awesome, and so, we're gonna be looking further into that and how that might affect our equipment policy plan, is that, is that a fair thing to say, Bill?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So-
We're looking into all sorts of things.
Yeah, yeah, so, anyway, I just, because I said it out loud to a whole bunch of people, you might be asked questions about that, so just wanted you to be aware, and then also-
What else did you commit us to?
Yeah, no, that was, that was, but then, also, there was a great event last night at the Garage Cultural Center about food security and climate change, and that was very interesting, and looking forward to having more conversation about food security and food sovereignty in central Vermont, so, again, just, it's on, on my radar, I wanted to thank Glenn, thank you so much for your time on the council, it has been a delight to have you here, we're sad to lose you, but, you know, I mean, you gotta, you gotta do, you gotta make good choices for you, so, you know, whatever works, so, but thank you, and I'm, we'll, I'll say this again, too, when it's our last meeting, but, you know, so, there's that, and then coming back to the Gerton Pocket Park, I am, it's, yeah, it's beyond, it feels like it's, it's sort of beyond just, we'll just commit to cleaning it up periodically, I would love to, and, and I feel, I will confess, I feel a little partially responsible for this, 'cause I had a hand in making this happen, and, and I feel like, you know, Tony was like, you know, this is gonna happen, so, I appreciate, appreciate you there with that, but one thought is that, you know, we might need to just rethink some aspects of that park, or, or not. park, or not, you know, do we leave it? Because it is, in a certain sense, providing a service. And that's a hard conversation to have, and one that I would actually love to, I mean, I may just send this to Ken Russell as well, but I know there's other multiple people here who attend the homelessness task force. But just thinking about that, I mean, that seems like it is potentially right in the middle of why we formed that group in the first place, you know, the, thinking about the conflict between the business community and homeless community. And so similarly, you know, how can this, in that I don't have a great solution for it at this point, I would be very interested in the homelessness task force's opinion as to what we can be doing. Is that something that you all feel like you can take to the task force and see if there's a...
Agendas are full, but I think that is something that we should talk about.
Yeah, because it needs a more long-term solution, and that's complicated. So we'll just leave it there for now, and I think that's it for me, yeah.
First of all, water sewer bills are due Monday. Get that out there. So you all know, one of the two, the really, the really cool thing that I was kind of hoping to announce doesn't seem like it's happening, and that's that an insider that I know put our department forward for a possible HBO documentary that would follow election, you know, stuff around, and it doesn't seem like it's happening. Gosh, I was really hoping to be able to announce that. But, and the other thing is, I'm the one who switched the flags. It's Tony's fault. He told me they were supposed to be the other way, so I take full responsibility.
Good. Is that it? Okay.
I don't have a lot. We've covered an awful lot tonight. We'll say that we're going to be announcing two really great hires for finance director and assistant to the city manager tomorrow or Friday, whenever we get around to writing the release and getting all the information together. But we have great people, and they're going to be joining our new team along with Cameron and all our new generation moving forward, so we're excited.
Cool. All right, anything further? All right, so without objection, we'll consider the meeting adjourned. 9:32.